All right. Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you for your patience. It is 6:02 PM, and I'm calling this meeting of the National Board of Education to order. Today is Monday, September 26, 2022. Ms. Gilio, could you call the roll, please?
Hi.
Ms. Darling?
Here.
Classy?
Here.
Ms. Gilio's here. Ms. Raymond?
Oh, okay. Do it again.
Ms. Darling?
Here.
Mr. Classy?
Here.
Ms. Gilio? Here. Ms. Raymond?
Here.
Okay. Ms. Lampier?
Here.
Ms. Brown?
Here.
Ms. Oden?
Here.
Ms. Johnson?
Here.
And Ms. Bishop is not here tonight. Okay, we also have Mr. Pasca, Mr. Donovan, and Ms. Duffy with us this evening, and both of our student representatives. Hi.
Okay. Welcome. So, I'm going to go ahead and do it anyways. Sorry. So, Mr. Rogers just let me know that he has orchestra performance or practice tonight. Yay! But so he'll have to step out early, and I wondered if the board would be open to having Mr. Rogers give his student member comments as we open the meeting, so that he doesn't leave without getting his chance to have his say. Any objections?
Nope.
Okay. The floor is yours, then, Mr. Rogers.
There wasn't much to say tonight besides congratulations to the North varsity football, soccer, and volleyball teams for beating South in Battle of the Bridge. We took, we lost eight to nine overall, but they did really great. So, congratulations, everybody.
All right. Thank you. Did you want to mention the File of FAFSA Information Night on the 5th and 6th, or no?
I did not have that information. I forgot.
Okay. It went out by email today from Mr. Burns. That's what I was wondering. Okay. Great. So, back, Mr. Sahu, are you able to stay, or did you need to go for early to? You're able to stay?
Yeah, I can stay.
Okay, great. So, having said that, let's do the prayer, which, I'm sorry, I skipped right over it, and it wasn't intentional. Ms. Gilio, and then if Ms. Brown could lead us in the pledge. I don't remember where we left.
Okay, great. Almighty God, we have the high honor and serious duty of managing the educational institutions of our beloved city. In our common endeavors, may we find a spirit of unity and understanding, which will enable us to face our multiple problems with an objective mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. Amen. Amen.
Please rise.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, everybody. I'm just going to pass this down for Mr. Classy and Ms. Darling. Those are two reports needing signatures from the board members before we leave this evening. Okay. So, starting our agenda for this evening, we have a presentation regarding ELL professional development. Is someone here to deliver that?
I think due to the absence of Dr. Andrade and Dr. Safferty, we're going to put that off till the next meeting.
Okay. So, we'll look forward to that next time. So, moving on to the consent agenda, I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda. I'll make the motion.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Lampier and Ms. Gilio. All in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
May.
Okay. So, it was...
Two nays?
Yep. It was Ms. Johnson and Ms., I'm sorry, Brown.
Okay.
And then?
Ms. Bishop's not here. Okay, great. No, thank you.
Okay. Do we have any items removed from the consent agenda? Any communications outside of the consent agenda? Okay. It looks like I could have gone ahead and waited, Mr. Rogers, I apologize. So, that brings us right to our first public question comment period. That's for items on the agenda. The sign up is there in white in the corner. Thank you very much, Mr. Markou.
Adam Markou, Forge Jolory Lane, President of the National Teachers Union.
Do I have to take notes on this?
There is another. Mike? What's on?
Can you just lift it up? Listen here.
I have to take minutes on this.
I have never been accused of being quiet, so... I'm Adam Markou, I'm at Forge Jolory Lane, President of the National Teachers Union, here tonight with another MOU, and I understand we just finished this contract, but this one is to address two missing sentences from Article 8, that were new to the contract, that both sides, the district and the union, spent hours going through tentative agreements, red line copies, and what I think happened is, we started seeing things that we thought were there, because you work with the same document over and over again. Both sides agree that the language is supposed to be there in communicating with Attorney Clausen. It was felt that the best thing to do was to memorialize it, change the digital copies, resubmit them, because the print copies have already been published. So, that's why we're here with that. Ideally, we would not, but we all did our due diligence in reviewing those copies, and these two sentences got left out. So, that's what that MOU is about tonight. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Markou. So, I'm seeing a very large number of students and families in the audience this evening, and none of them are listed on our public comments period for the first one, which makes me suspect that they're here for the second public comment period. I'd like to pose a question to the board of whether or not we should ask all of these folks to wait until we get through our business on the agenda, or if we want to take things out of order and do the second comment period early. Ms. Johnson?
I don't have a problem taking things out of order and doing the second public comment, because there's no sense, and everybody's sitting around and waiting for us to finish our business, because it couldn't get long at the end. And so, I don't have a problem, and hopefully, my fellow board members will be agreeing with me.
Okay. Does anyone else have any thoughts on it? Nope? Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Oden.
Oh, I just put my glasses on.
Oh. All right. I tend to agree with Ms. Johnson. High school starts awfully early, and I imagine these kids have homework and other activities to do. So, with consensus of the board, I'd like to go ahead and have the second comment period, and then when we get to the end of our agenda, we can see if anybody got missed. Is that fair? Okay. Ms. Darling, could you grab the second sign up? Is anyone not signed up who wanted to be signed up? Okay. That makes it easy. Now, I will do my best with names and reading, but handwriting deciphering is not one of my skill sets, so please feel free to correct me if I say something wrong, because we want it to be proper for the record. Okay. Do we need last names, though? I think it's okay. All right. So, the first name on the list is Divya Nagri. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. So, we're going to ask you to indicate your name and address for the record. If you are a student coming up, just your name and that you're a student, and we'll make sure that no other identifying information goes into our minutes.
Divya Nagri, 14 Annabelle Court in Nashua. And was there something else I was supposed to say for that, or that's...
That's good.
Yep.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is Divya Nagri, and I'm the proud mother of a junior in the class of 2024. I'm also a proud teacher for over eight years, teaching biotechnology right here at Nashua North. I'm speaking on behalf of many parents who are here tonight to express our concerns about the May 12, 2022 decision to remove class rank and weighted GPA and restructure the way academic excellence and achievement are recognized, not only for the original task force recommendation for the class of 2026 onwards, but especially the amended decision to start with the class of 2024, who are in the middle of their high school careers. Most parents that I spoke with were completely unaware of this impactful decision by the board, as was I, until two weeks ago, and we still do not have a clear picture of the rationale and implementation of this motion. For example, current juniors have already received grades for half their classes and probably planned all their classes, with the advice of their teachers, guidance counselors, and parents, based on the existing system outlined in the 2223 Program of Studies. Students can see their weighted GPA and unweighted GPA in X2, starting at the end of their freshman year. Is this existing weighted GPA going to be taken away from current students? Our GPA system and method of recognizing academic excellence should be aligned with the percentile ranks colleges are looking for as well. This system should encourage students to challenge themselves to take the most rigorous course load appropriate for them, to prepare them for the competitive world that we live in. With this newly passed motion, students run the risk of a distorted sense of accomplishment or disappointment if unweighted GPA is the sole determinant of academic achievement recognition, without considering the rigor of the course. For example, state universities such as UNH award merit scholarships based on a weighted scale. Local scholarships such as the Nashua Rotary Scholarship ask for class rank and weighted GPA. Why should our Nashua students miss out on these opportunities? We recognize and honor excellence in many disciplines, athletics, the arts, business, and music. We give a gold medal to the winner of a 100-meter dash. Why are academics any different? Just as it takes countless hours of training for an athlete to perform at that elite level, it takes years of effort and dedication for elite academic achievement as well, and this should be recognized. Applications for free merit programs for all juniors are open now, and other students as well, and if there is a discrepancy between the original weighted GPA the student thinks they have, and the new, unweighted GPA that will change on the transcript, then our students may be disqualified from these wonderful opportunities. These students are already reeling from the events of the past few years, and changes like this halfway through their journey they started years ago causes unnecessary distraction and anxiety. I know that no system, I know that no system is perfect, but the decision for our students should include input from all stakeholders. The method of academic recognition for Nashua students should align with the post-secondary plans of all our students, military, jobs, college. I respectfully request that the board make a motion to rescind the new restructuring of how academic excellence and achievement is recognized for current students, and reevaluate for future students with input from all of the stakeholders. Thank you again for your service to our school district and your consideration on this matter.
Thank you. Okay. Next, I have Dejya Nagri.
Dejya.
Dejya Nagri.
Yeah? Can you hear me?
Nope. Can you repeat it just a little louder?
Dejya Nagri. I'm a junior at Nashua South. So, good evening. Today, I would like to express my concerns about the board's decision to replace the current GPA and class rank system for students in the class of 2024, which is the class I'm part of. When I found out about the switch from the current weighted GPA and numerical ranking system to Latin honors based off an unweighted GPA a couple of weeks ago, I was blindsided. Last year, I was not aware that this issue was even being seriously discussed for my class. Neither myself nor my parents had received communication from school admin, from guidance, from the student representative to the Board of Education before or after a decision was made. Even after I heard rumors of a change, everyone I asked had conflicting answers on what the new system would entail, never reflecting the real decision to remove class rank and weighted GPA, starting from the class of 2024. Had I known that the board discussed this in May, I would have come to express my opinion, but I never got this chance, which is why I'm here today. Enacting this new system for GPA and ranking for the class of 2024 is unfair to us as students, because we went through high school, we went into high school with the expectation that at the end of our four years, we would receive a weighted GPA and a class rank. I chose classes and planned my courses accordingly. At this point, us as juniors, we've already completed 50% of our courses, we've chosen 75%, and we've received a weighted GPA, based on the grades we've worked hard to earn for the past two years. To quote some of the board members in the May meeting, "To change the system now would be like changing the rules of a soccer game at halftime, especially since it's a game we've been playing for two years." This change is causing me stress and anxiety, wondering what this will mean for college, jobs, scholarship, internship applications, especially since I never got the chance to plan for it. This change also devalues the work we've already put into courses that we've finished, and discourages us from challenging ourselves in more difficult courses in the future. It renders the countless hours and effort we've put into earning grades in honors classes, AP, CTE, it makes them unrecognized by the school. This sudden change makes us regret taking courses that helped us experience college-level work, which will help us in our future, if we got a lower grade than we would have in a differently leveled course. It decreases our motivation to continue challenging ourselves, because we worry about what effect it'll have on our unweighted GPA and potential academic distinctions. Previous public comment on this topic has also focused on the idea that class rank promotes unhealthy competition and discourages students from taking courses they're interested in. But I've never actually experienced this. My peers have always been happy to help each other, understand material, to collaborate, encouraging each other to do our best. I also never felt extreme pressure to take only AP classes. I'm currently in a two-year CTE program at the honors level, and I'm very happy with that decision, even though it hurts my GPA. We always have a choice in what courses we take and what we do, despite external pressures, and I'm glad, I'm learning how to navigate that now. In life, there's always going to be competition, there's always going to be someone that's better than me at something, they're going to have advantages over me, we're all going to excel at different things. But whether that be athletics, academics, arts, anything else, that healthy competition pushes us to try something new, to make ourselves better, and to hopefully understand each other. Everyone has their own strengths and weaknesses, which is what makes us all unique and special. Now, I recognize I'm only one voice out of the hundreds in the class of 2024 across both high schools. So, I put together a petition expressing these concerns and asked my peers to weigh in. We've had less than a week to collect signatures and collect others' opinions, but many agreed, and right now, we have over 45 signatures requesting that the board rescind and reconsider this decision for the class of 2024. This sudden change is unexpected, unclear, and unexplained, so we respectfully request that it not be implemented for current juniors. Thank you for your time and consideration. Also, if you would like, I have copies, I have the original copy of the petition, if you would like to see it.
Are you prepared to turn in the petition today? Or did you just want to give us a copy? Or do you want, what is it that you would prefer? Because I'm happy to take it and distribute it to the members of the board.
Is there a difference between turning it in and giving you a copy?
No.
I have a copy if you would like it.
I don't necessarily need the, we don't need the original, right? No. So, we'll make sure that it gets distributed to all the board members and also the superintendent's office.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay. I'm sorry. Next on the list is, oh, it's so tiny. Correct me if I messed it up, please. Okay. Yep. Mr. Pasca, I'm going to put this in the book, so that your office can make copies for us.
Hey, so, I'm Abhinav Avaru. Oh, you pronounced it close enough. So, yeah, I'm a junior, just like Dejya. I'm part of the class of 2024. So, I was looking at the meeting, and the meetings that went on, specifically the May meeting, the input you guys received, the student input, came from one Board of Education representative from the school, and like six students, all from the class of 2023, all talking about one perspective. I feel like this really doesn't actually represent what people in the class, in the National School District actually think. For example, like this could have led to a false consensus effect. You guys might have been thinking, oh, everyone thinks this way, when in reality, we didn't even know this meeting occurred. Only like five or six people who actually knew people on the board actually knew what the purpose of the May meeting was, and that's why there weren't that many people there. Along with that, not only did we really not have a proper representation of, you know, what actually students thought, me personally, I planned my entire high school career believing that there'd be weighted GPA and a class rank. This was changed at a critical juncture in my high school life, right around junior year, where I'm pretty sure you guys all know, this is one of the most important years in regards to, like, you know, college admissions. When it happens at this type of critical juncture, this creates a really profound effect on a lot of different people, because it was stated before, we can't apply to scholarships, like a few scholarships, because we don't have a rank, or we don't have a class rank, a weighted GPA. We're really getting deprived of potentially thousands of dollars that would help us not take out student loans. This type of overturning right in the middle of our high school can have a profound effect that won't be seen just now, but later on in college and afterwards. This is pretty much the same as, you know, starting off the Super Bowl, everything goes well, but then, but then the NFL randomly decides to abolish the point system essentially after halftime, based on what like four or five people said. It just really doesn't make sense, and that's why I implore you guys to revisit this decision and to please overturn it, because it could have a lot of harmful effects. And going back to what Dejya said, at least in my grade, I can't talk about, you know, class of 2023, 2022, whatever, I don't feel like it's that toxic in my grade. My grade's pretty chill, they're, we're really collaborative, and it isn't that hypercompetitive. And I don't think it has that much of a harmful effect. It's not like so toxic that every single person is constantly stressing about it. No, it's, still collaboration occurs, we're still students, and I really hope you guys reconsider your decision. Thank you.
Thank you. I think it's an aye. I'd just like to say whoever wrote the next like eight has really nice handwriting, so...
Hi, everyone. Hi, everyone. My name is Trisha Prakash, a current junior at Nashua High School South, just like Dejya and Abhinav. Thank you so much for taking the time today to be here, to listen to our concerns about the recent edit made to our grading system. So, going off of what Abhinav said, I think most of the kids in our grade are still unaware of the removal of the weighted GPA and class rank, and still don't have any of the ideas of implications it may cause during our journey of applying to colleges. As per our curriculum and what our guidance counselors told us on our first day of freshman year, they had advised us to create a four-year plan, and we had specifically created it to map out the classes we wanted to take. And specifically... Is this, is this better? Yes. Okay. Sorry. No, sorry about that. So, we had specifically created our four-year plan to combine AP classes, regular classes, and any classes honestly we wanted to take and we were interested in, in order to get the most out of our high school careers. This has discouraged many of my friends, as well as me, from challenging ourselves in the future, especially our senior year coming up now, to reach our max potential and challenging ourselves academically in order to learn more, as the work we are putting in is not being rewarded in any way we can see, or in a way we can convey to colleges or to scholarships for our hard work, and to put any of this towards our future endeavors, like in jobs, internships, and any of the following. Changing the rules in the middle of our four-year plan has come to a shock, as none of us knew this would be happening, and we had no previous updates, and we were completely in the dark on what had happened. Like in a board game, when you change the rules midway, I think this is similar to Abhinav's analogy, but when the rules are changed midway, it puts anyone who's making progress or is who's trying to make progress at a disadvantage, and that's truly how I feel. From my experience, I had plans based on knowing and submitting my weighted GPA to colleges and scholarships, and I'm confused as to how this will affect me in the future and in my academic career. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nathan?
My name is Nathan Vengetremanen, and I'm a freshman at Nashua High School North this year. I, along with my fellow peers, freshmen of Nashua High Schools North and South in the class of 2026, would like for the school district to reimplement the weighted GPA system for our class for the following reasons. Foremost, the AP and honors classes that we selected were our choice because we wanted to challenge ourselves. Having a boosted GPA is like a trophy or award. Someone doesn't run a race even though they hate running just to get a trophy. They run it because they love running, but getting that little reward just makes that whole journey even sweeter. Similarly for us, we feel even more proud and happy about our achievements with the boosted GPA. In our presentation, my peers and I will voice our opinions on this topic, including how it affects each of us and our education, starting with myself. Ever since I can remember, I've always strived to push myself the hardest I can in school, from taking the most interesting and hardest classes I could, to signing up for as many clubs as possible. This allowed me to achieve as much as I could academically and impacted my learning in a great way. The little bit of recognition this would give me, in terms of greater benefits from my increased workload, also played a role in mine and many other students' choices regarding course selections. While interest in selected courses is definitely a big factor in classrooms... Sorry. Well, sorry. While interest in select courses is definitely a big factor in selections, the extra credit gained from taking these higher-level AP or honors classes certainly was and should continue to be a driving, albeit secondary to interest, factor in course selections for those wanting to push themselves and really test their limits. Removing the weighted GPA system will also put me and other students at a competitive disadvantage when it comes to college applications. Many colleges look for weighted GPA, along with class rank, when assessing student applications, and removing these would greatly reduce the possibility of getting into my ideal college and many other students' chances as well. Next, my friend Ishanvi will speak about how the changed GPA system will affect her and her opinion on the subject. Thank you.
Thank you. Ishanvi. And the next several people didn't write their last names down, but I will attempt to write it down as you speak.
Good evening. I hope you're all doing well. My name is Ishanvi Sharma, and I'm a freshman from Nashua North as well. So, coming to school every day is something I look forward to, not only because I get to spend time with my friends and strengthen bonds with them, but because I get to learn more and more every day. I enjoy challenging myself, so I took honors courses wherever I could within the prescribed subjects. I actually wanted to do AP World History as well this year, but due to the max of eight credits per year, I opted for honors instead. I'm aiming for a holistic development in my high school career, so not only have I taken honors courses, but I'm also a first-time cadet in the JRTC program this semester, and I've taken additional electives like piano, because it has been a genuine interest and love of mine for a near decade. Going back to the weighted GPA system, I would like it to be reinstated for the following reason. The system gives merit for the amount of hard work you put into that course. It's like a little reward, like my friend said. Lots of people and myself took honors courses because we wanted to, not out of peer pressure or coercion. However, knowing that the weighted system has been removed, lots of us and myself are starting to have a little voice in our head, saying that maybe we shouldn't put that little bit of extra effort to get an A+, because that work won't be recognized by the unweighted GPA system, despite the fact that we originally wanted to do an honors course. But now, in an age where I'm choosing classes consciously, I want and feel it beneficial to strive to challenge myself with harder-level courses. Having a weighted GPA system to give the credit due for the additional work which comes with these classes makes me want to continue to push myself to my potential. If students like myself wish to test their limits, regardless of the level of course, from foundations to AP, why shouldn't we be recognized for the work that we do inside of school and the amount of time that we spend outside dedicated to the same? If not set it so that it's unweighted or weighted for all, why not give us students a choice? High school preps us for real life out there. If we want to pursue higher education or take certain career paths, our choices in high school are based on that. If a college looks at a weighted GPA to even be considered, won't I be at a disadvantage compared to someone from coming from another school with it? Thank you for your consideration, and now I'd like to pass it on to my friend Arna.
Thank you. Arna?
Hi, my name's Arna Pavla. Should I spell the last name?
That would be very helpful. Okay. Thank you.
So, I'm another freshman, this time from Nashua South. So, I took AP World History, and it's a college-level course, which means it's a lot of work, and on top of that, it's history. So, one of the main concerns is that students will take the course just for the GPA, and I'll admit, it was one of the factors that I considered, because going into high school, there wasn't any mention of the change to the GPA when registering or in the program of study, so I thought, why not? Because it seems interesting enough, and I'm getting a higher GPA. So, now it's been about a month into school, and since the GPA system might change, there are some kids who might want to drop the course, and there isn't any way to drop it, because it's too late. So, you're going to get an IP on your transcript, and if the weighted GPA was given just for this year and then removed next year, there's going to be a really big drop in a lot of going to be a really big drop in a lot of people's GPAs. Like, oh, this kid did amazing in freshman and then what happened in all the other four years? And even if the intention isn't for the standard that students are put up to the drop, it still will happen. So in eighth grade, my English teacher, he would always give everyone a 98%. So he'd just give like a page limit and then a word count for how many vocabulary words you need to have. And if you did that, you got a 98. So like one person wrote a whole book and they still got a 98. So then we had a final essay, which was a six-page research paper. And I wrote an essay about chairs and a lot of people did really deep topics like the impact of COVID and inflation. And everyone still got a 98% because they made the page count and the word limit. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you very much. Hasini?
Hello, everyone. I'm Lakshmi Hasini Buddepu. Would you like that to be spelled out?
Yes, please.
So my first name is Lakshmi.
Okay. I actually knew how to spell that one. I'm really. Keep going.
My last name is Buddepu.
Okay. And so what is the, I have Hasini next, is that?
That's my middle name.
Middle name, okay. Nickname. I'm going to call it.
Thank you.
Thank you for your patience with me.
As Ishani has previously mentioned, I also wanted to take AP World History but couldn't due to the credits limit. I'm also taking JROTC next semester and I'm part of a few clubs. I love challenging myself, hence I'm taking honor courses this year. I will be talking about how the removal of the GPA system affects student college admissions. As my peers have previously highlighted, kids that are taking APs are challenging themselves, but due to the removal of the weighted GPA system, they don't get any special recognition for taking this course. In the different levels of the courses, there is a difference in what you learn, but colleges won't be able to see any distinct differences. GPA and class rank play a key role in many colleges, including top universities. Of course, GPA and class rank aren't the only factors that admission officers consider. Colleges usually use both weighted and unweighted GPA to make their acceptance decisions. However, personally, as a woman who moved to America from a different country for the reasons of better educational opportunities, I feel it necessary for the weighted GPA system to be reinstated. Comparing the weighted and unweighted GPA systems, the unweighted GPA system represents how well a student did in their course, while the weighted GPA system shows how well they did, along with how challenging the course was and how students push themselves, which is really a major factor in college admissions. The weighted GPA system helps people that do more to be credited for doing more and hence should be brought back. Thank you for giving me this, thank you for giving me this chance to speak. Now we will be hearing from my friend Kooshani.
Kooshani?
Hello, district board members. My name is Kooshani Ghosh and the last name will be G-H-O-S-H.
Thank you.
All right. I am a current ninth grader at Nashua High School South. When I entered South, I was amazed by the number of opportunities I found for myself to advance. So I wanted to make the most of it and I joined clubs, sports, and for me, most importantly, honor-level courses. I knew the schooling system would also recognize me for my extensive efforts and serve me with great happiness my weighted GPA. The weighted GPA allows students to work harder, smarter, and persevere, knowing that they will have the rightfully deserved GPA. With an unweighted GPA system, it seems to make no difference between foundation-level courses and honors levels. However, honor-level courses tend to have extreme rigor and it takes more effort to get where you are from a foundation level. Such efforts do receive recognition, not only in their gradebook, but in their college applications. As we all know, high school prepares us for a prosperous and fulfilling life. Weighted GPA truly helps us show the capability of each individual child when they perform their best and motivates us, students, to continue to challenge ourselves. I'll be handing it over to Pratham.
All right, thank you. Pratham?
Yeah. Hello, my name is Pratham Mukwar. You need to spell the last name?
Please. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, so I'm a freshman at Nashua South High School. My friends and I released a survey for the class of 2026 designed to support our cause. We have had only three days to get people to sign this and we have acquired a total of 106 signatures supporting a weighted GPA system as of now. I'm sure that there are many others who are not aware of our petition and will support us. In Nashua South, I'm taking AP Calculus AB. I have a passion for math and for the past three years, I've been taking advanced courses not originally meant for my grade. I wasn't doing it for the GPA, but to gain more exposure to my favorite subject. But with the removal of the weighted GPA system, I'm concerned that colleges I apply to won't see that I took the rigor of my courses to the next level. With the weighted GPA system, I can rest assured that this course will yield an extra 1.0 GPA in a transcript for a freshman. Additionally, many of my other courses are honors-level courses, which I decided would challenge me to a certain extent. I spent careful time and much consideration in deciding my courses for the, for the year because I really wanted to reform, reform beyond expectation in my competitive sport, swimming. I prioritize my studies first over swimming, but these are the years when I really have to step up and start focusing. I'm sure many other student athletes realize that they need to balance their studies and their sports in order to be proficient in a variety of things. Without the weighted GPA system, I feel like the extra work I'm doing is for nothing and my time would be better spent swimming. Reinstiting the weighted GPA system would make many high schoolers like myself feel their additional efforts were worth it and will encourage others to start taking advanced courses as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right. Divya? Oh, I'm sorry. Do you have the petition with you? Okay, if you can hand it, oh, go ahead. If you could hand it to Ms. Darling, we'll do the same thing and we'll get it to the superintendent's office for copies to be put out to everyone. Thank you so much. Thank you for waiting, Divya. I appreciate it.
Hello and good evening. My name is Divya Ravel. My last name is spelled R-A-V-A-L. So I'm a freshman at Nashua High School South, so I'm the class of 2026. I love to learn new things and I'm also a part of a lot of clubs. I'm also a student athlete this year, which is a lot of work. It's my honor to be back at this podium. I was here last year from Fairgrounds Middle School as a vice president to share our school's successes and experiences. And today, I'm here to share my viewpoint on the weighted GPA. I took honors classes this year because I wanted to, not just to increase my GPA. Honors classes helped me get the most of what I need out of school and they come with a lot more work. I know these classes come with responsibility, so I expected to get the credit for them as well. I believe that getting rid of the weighted GPA will affect students' course selections. Students will start to take easier classes instead of challenging themselves because they are not being credited for it. This is the same thing as studying hard for a test and then realizing that everyone got an A+ for trying. This discourages students and leads to students realizing that they might not want to put in so much extra time and effort for something that won't reflect on their GPA. Every student has their own capabilities and strengths and levels do not truly show each person's capabilities. We believe that the grading system should be changed to benefit all. Reinstiting the weighted GPA will give students the drive to work hard and persevere in school. Thank you for your time and I hope you take our opinions into consideration.
All right, thank you very much. If I could just interrupt for one moment, we've hit our 30 minutes required for public comments, so I'm looking for a motion from a board member to extend public commenting. We have four more people signed up.
I'm moved.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Gilio. Okay, so I don't think we have a spot for it in the book exactly. Just maybe under public comments, write it.
Yeah, I'll find a place to put it. I'll put it at the bottom of this.
Okay. I just want to make sure we record everything properly. Okay. All in favor of extending public comments, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Public comments are extended. Next, I have Shriya, no last name.
Hi, you can hear me, right?
Yes.
Okay, so my name is Shriya Menon. My last name is spelled M-E-N-O-N.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm currently a sophomore at Nashua High School South. Judging by the fact that I'm a sophomore, I'm almost halfway into my high school education, having taken all APs or honors last year and this year. The removal of the weighted GPA is an unfair action on my efforts and drive through this and last year, decrediting all of my hard work through these challenging classes. But this isn't just a problem just for me, but this is a problem for all of my peers who are in high school this year, from the seniors to the freshmen. Most of them have spoken already. What would be the use of these more rigorous courses if we're not getting the credit due for our hard work? This new policy does not give students the motivation to challenge themselves and learn, instead opting to take much more simpler classes in order to just receive higher grades. On top of that, this decision was taken without the opinion of the student body considered as me and many of my friends and their parents were not even aware of this and they only came to know about it much later. My main concern with this decision is that it is causing irreversible damage to my and other peers' high school planning, as I cannot now change the classes that I've taken in the past. I feel like a lot of, one of the main concerns that I've realized regarding the decision of this policy is that it, this promotes a bit more less competitive of an environment, but there are a lot of benefits to a competitive environment, though not one too toxic. And judging by what the juniors have said before me and from my personal experiences as a sophomore, we're a very collaborative bunch of students. We always support each other. Of course, we are a little bit competitive, but we never beat each other down. And we all do know the worth of our education and we truly do want to be given that credit that we, for our higher-level classes. Personally, for me, I have huge aspirational dreams in my future education. I was planning on going to medical school and I know that, and a lot of people here might know, that medical school is really highly competitive nowadays. And these higher-level courses are just, is going to be a big benefit in my future dreams in order to achieve this higher postgraduate education. The public education system is designed to help students grow and reach their educational goals and we students trust that you all have our best interest in mind, but this, this decision is just not one that will assist us in our future goals. The rushed implementation of this policy for the class of 2022 on is not for the better of the students and our education and must be reconsidered. Thank you.
Thank you. Sri Vaishnavi? I'm sorry, I said that wrong. Sri? Yeah. Vaishad? Vaishanavi? Did I get it? No.
We'll find out.
She's giving me a look like not even close.
No, it was good enough. Sri Vaishnavi Bachiraju. The last?
Oh, he's not picking you up on the recorder.
The last name would be spelled B-A-C-H-I-R-A-J-U.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sri Vaishnavi Bachiraju and I am a sophomore at Nashua High School South. I just really wanted to say that as a student, I really appreciate class rank and its benefits, so I am against it being removed. Personally, the competition, it motivates me to try my hardest in every aspect of a subject, which would be like the homework, the discussions, the formatives, and the summatives. I constantly put my best effort in school and studies and I have always felt proud and satisfied of this. Sometimes I feel disappointed when my classmates get higher grades than me, but I don't, I don't think that weighted GPA should be taken away because of this. The advantages of working your hardest, including getting more recognition from colleges and feeling more self-accomplishment, I feel outweigh the drawbacks. I also like to add, if anything, if a student works hard so that they can feel challenged and not having weighted GPA or higher weighted GPA as a reward, I think that would be a little more discouraging. Yeah, I think a lot of the other student representatives highlighted a lot of the main points that I wanted to say, so thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Harish Babar?
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
So name Harish Babar, address 5 Wild Rose Drive. So before I can read my prepared statement here, I'm going to just say a couple of sentences here. It's very heartening to see all the students and the kids coming in and say all the word I have to say. This is very important actually before, you know, parents actually have things to say, but their voice can matter more than ours. So I'm just going to add some parents' voice here. First of all, I want to thank you for the opportunity to come here and express your opinion. I'm a parent of two children, actually, both from the Nashua North. One who kind of graduated from the year of 2022, this year itself, and the other's actually kind of expected to be in the class of 2024. My concerns are pretty much what you heard actually in the last 40 minutes here about the resolutions with the weighted GPA and the numeric class ranking that was removed in May of 2022. So I have kind of a few bullet points I'm going to just read through. So point number one, as you heard actually over and over, this enforcement year of 2024 is directly going to impact the students who are already in the middle of their high school program. And students, actually, they have made their very careful course selections with their certain goals. They worked really hard and now actually they're kind of finding themselves to, you know, very shocked to find that these changes are coming in with no clear understanding of the impact it's going to have on their college, their prospect, the job, and the career and everything so forth. The point number two, the, despite the arguments that actually we heard in the last few meetings, the class rank and the weighted GPA do materially impact students' chances for the scholarships, the internships which apply on the school district providing it. Yes, there are some Ivy League colleges and the top colleges actually which they use their own methodology for the calculation, but besides that, there are a lot of public universities which don't do that. So this is a quote actually that I kind of got from the College Board website itself. The start of the quote is, "Most large state universities still require applicants to report class rank, as do many scholarship programs, and rely on it to help sort through the high volume of applications received." End of quote. And there is one more quote actually, which is more about the large public state universities such as the University of California are no longer using the SAT/ACD scores, as we know because of the pandemic, as a factor in the college admissions and scholarships, making the weighted GPA and the percentile ranking that much more important. So it is something actually that's kind of has the potential to bring real harm to the students. Point number three, there is a significant percentage of students, actually, you heard them all over actually that, who are really driven, who are really motivated and honest and they strive on the healthy competition and who actually challenge each other kind of very collaboratively with no ill will and no kind of, you know, like, competition with the, competition is there by healthy competition, nothing of that. So I think we should not try to make these qualities actually as the negative and the toxic, because that actually will be very contrary to the word our mission is here is as the parent and the educator to kind of give good education to our kids. Lastly, the numeric ranking system is used exclusively within the sports and the athletics, where it can promote the healthy competition with getting the best out of the participant. So in that kind of system, actually, we just seem to be not just accepting, but even encouraging and cheering for it, despite actually it has the real risk of causing the physical and mental harm in some instances, as we all, like sports can be a little bit risky. So I think, you know, for some reason, actually in academics, the same system actually is being stigmatized, which is kind of not a good thing. So lastly, I mean, I mean, I have listened to and understand and appreciate all the concerns raised in the previous meetings by the students and some of the faculty, but in my view, actually, those concerns are very much addressable through proper channels and proper means. There could be counseling, there could be some of the things that can be done on a case-by-case basis, but that should not actually really mean that we should abandon the system that existed for X number of years. So I respectfully urge the board of education to reverse these resolutions and keep the national schools as choice education destinations for the students where they continue to keep putting their best foot forward. And after, like, when students excel, it also earns a very positive reputation for the Nashville School District. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Okay. And I have, it's very small. Sedananda? Sedandanda? Okay. And then I cannot read.
No worries.
The last name. Fake?
It's Sadanand Farke.
Farke, okay.
Yeah. And live in 164 Sithia Drive, Nashua.
Okay, thank you for your patience.
Yeah, yeah. So hello, board members. My name is Farke and my son is 11th grade at Nashua South High School. I think good news, I think I'm the last one to speak today, so. I think good news, I think I'm the last one to speak today, so. But my only concern to the Board is that how come this decision was not communicated to parents and then, and students and so forth, before taking the decision and after taking the decision? How come such an important changes to the existing system was not brought to parents and students' attention? We wouldn't be in this meeting if it was properly communicated to parents, had sought their opinion, decision was taken based on the best interest of students, whether it's existing or upcoming students. So my son suddenly came two or three weeks back from the school, and he said about this, this information, and we were like, no, there is no way possible because there is no communication whatsoever. Forget about before, even after communication. And we were clueless even two weeks back when we started this group and started discussing about it, right? And we were totally unaware of this big change that happened in the middle of the high school, right? You know, normally you will make this kind of decision for the kids who are coming into the school, newcomers, so they know what the system is and how it works, but not for the students in the middle of their, the school. According to Board of Education policies and procedures listed in Nashua School webpage, it clearly says that the committee should communicate any curriculum changes to the public. I don't know whether this is considered as a curriculum change, but that's what the website says, right? So in this case, I feel the Board clearly failed to, you know, follow some of these guidelines. So, thank you.
Thank you. So it is now six fifty-three, and, oh, I see a hand. Sir?
I didn't realize you were going out of order, and I didn't sign in for the second public comment.
Oh, okay, yes, please, come up. Thank you.
Matthew Guthro, G-O-U-T-H-R-O, 104 Fon Lane.
104, I'm sorry, what, what lane?
104 Fon Lane.
Fon Lane, okay, thank you.
Good evening, members of the Board of Education and staff. I wanted to bring up the subject of safety with you all today. I'm gonna go over it in three quick parts, the good, the bad, and the ugly. First, the good. The last time I was here, I brought to your attention the glaring need for our school resource officers here in the Nashua School District. At the time, I discussed with you that we only had two, one for each high school, and none for the middle or elementary schools. At the time, I left discouraged, when many shrugged their shoulders and said, "It's not our budget, not our concern." So I went and spoke with the Board of Aldermen and the Police Commission and the Police Chief, and I'm pleased to share with you today that because of my persistence, the chief was able to redeploy some resources to give the Nashua Public Schools another resource officer that will provide additional coverage for three of our middle schools. Plus, they plan to use a grant program to allow officers to positively engage with elementary school students at recess. Hopefully, this is just the start of additional efforts to continue to keep our most vulnerable population safe in our public schools here in Nashua. Now, the bad. I'm concerned about the increasing violence that is occurring at Stello Stadium off the field during our national, Nashua High School football games. While I appreciate the superintendent's request to the Nashua Police Department for extra police officers for last Friday's Battle of the Bridge football game between North and South, this problem really needs to be addressed. I've attended all of the Nashua North home football games this season, and while the play on the field is action-packed, it pales in comparison to what's happening off the field besides the bleachers. Most of these fights are going viral on social media as they're being filmed by all angles by students with cell phones. Having the NPD there is a wonderful, but with the venue of this size, it's irresponsible to think that they're your only means of security. Surely, our high schools and Nashua School District has their own security staff to provide a proactive measure to ensure that the police department are not needed except for rare circumstances. Unfortunately, these circumstances of fighting have become all too common at this venue, and I ask that you work with the superintendent and his staff on practical applications to provide more of a safe and fan-friendly environment at these events. And last, finally, the ugly. It's nice that we have a program here in Nashua to address public health concerns like flu shots. As a parent here in the city of Nashua, I am appalled to learn that a student at Birch Hill Elementary was vaccinated from influenza without parental consent last week. Since your primary responsibility is for the well-being of our student population here in Nashua, this should be a concern for everyone on this dais, especially those of you with children. I'm sure there's investigation underway, and I would like to recommend that before you bang the gavel and end tonight's meeting, that you recommend that the Nashua School District suspend all activities with the Nashua Division of Public Health and Community Services until the conclusion of that investigation, so that you can clearly determine that no other students were involved, and assurances can be made that the safety measures that should have been followed are going to be followed moving forward. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for bringing that information to us. Oh, I see one more hand. Oh, I see a lot of hands, okay. Board, are we okay with letting a few more people speak? Okay. Why don't we bring that back, and I'll just have people write their names on it again? Here, just pass it down to Christina.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sachin Patel. I live at the sixty-nine Cherrywood Drive.
Okay, we're gonna have you write your name on that when you finish speaking, if you don't mind, sir.
There's a pen behind you, sir.
And then the other gentleman who raised his hand, if you could sign in when you come to the podium as well, thank you. Oh, good.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sachin Patel. I live here on sixty-nine Cherrywood Drive. So thank you for listening, guys. So you see that many parents are here, many students are here, and we just found out about this decision of the weighted GPA and removing the ranking system. This is not the matter of class twenty-four or twenty-six. The whole, the policy, in my opinion, is not right. By profession, I'm a physician. So first thing, like, removing this ranking system is like removing, like, you know, you don't have any score in the football game. Then everybody, all teams are same pretty much. Same thing, my kids are in the, here, my daughter is in ninth grade, and my son is is, so even we are thinking now, many parents are thinking, do we need to leave in the Nashua, so it's thinking even future is going to affect the whole demographic of the Nashua too. Because this is not, is a, just, this is happening, even at the medical level, I see that. I came from India, over there, where my admission process happen like on the caste system. If you are like, even in certain caste, the lower percentage, you can get that admission where you are competing for the very high grade. So by the end of the day, when you get the, see the doctor, there'll be some doctor who maybe has sixty percentage, so would you prefer to go with that kind of doctor? So same philosophy is applying here. So competition is very important for all the kids here, and is everybody's option. I heard that one, one hour and forty-five minute of meeting on the, on May twelfth, there is only five kids. It sounds like very orchestrated meeting kind of thing. The, nobody, parents were listen, informed about this meeting, so nobody was given opportunity to speak about this big, because this is not just for, they even curd, in the kindergarten is going to affect them in the future by removing this system. And nobody, nobody was communicated about this thing, otherwise on that day, you would be bigger than this crowd if anybody was doing that. Just simple for the newer middle school name, and the street name, everybody got the survey. What, would you prefer this school name or not? But this is a very important issue, and we never got any communication from the school system. And whole, I think, whole board was blindsided by the some people, yes, I feel that way, looking at the meeting. Because even in that meeting, it was when, oh, these kids are coming here to, so they can speak, so they can create the emotional experience, so board can create the right decision. That was a thing. So I'm from profession position of view, the, is ADHD or anxiety or anything has nothing to do with this ranking. If somebody is ADHD, that is a different story, is not just like because of the ranking they get that or school system. There is all multiple factor, the family factor, their environment, or anxiety or depression, is not just for the school system. We have like more, less success in the athletic, like, how many athletes get succeed when they're working so many hard? But still, they get the, they, only one person can become Tom Brady, not everybody becomes Tom Brady. But because he's hard work, he put that. So same thing, if somebody's putting hard work, their work should be appreciated, and in the future, if you want like everybody at the same level, then you don't know. Right now, same thing happening, the, I just, I'm coming back from the work, I had medical students following me, and they see the like, there is only pass and fail, there is no two-digit score. So many program director at the medical level, they are also confused how to choose the, which kid is good for the school system. So I think the weighted GPA and the ranking system should be, is not like, is encouragement for the kids to compete? And somebody doesn't want to, they have option, they can choose the art class, that's fine, nothing. We need everybody in the society, we need a physician, we need engineer, but that to properly, to get the, everybody has their own role. So there is nothing wrong in keeping the weighted GPA, because everywhere, because as many, Mr. Farkay mentioned that, many school system, they're looking this GPA score and the ranking. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. I'm just gonna make one last call here, and then we're gonna close it after this gentleman. Okay?
Thank you for taking the, allowing me to speak. My name is Amit Shokin. I live in 106 Cherrywood Drive, Nashua, New Hampshire. And I won't repeat all the things which parents and students have raised already, but what I want to say, like, I'm a father of a daughter who already graduated from Nashua South. She's in second year of college, University of Pittsburgh, in a gap program. She's gonna become a dentist. She, she, and when I told her, this is what's happening, the first reaction, what? Why did they do that? Because she was able to take all the courses, and she was a school tennis captain also. Nobody was forcing her, I never forced her. I'm engineered by profession, I do what makes you feel good, what makes you happy. And all the courses what she took was her decision, not my decision. So, and my son is in ninth grade right now, and so that's another important aspect which we all are missing, as Dr. Patel said, I moved in Nashua in 2007. It was a small community. Now look around Nashua, how much is growing? The number one reason is education. We put a nice big sign on exit one, Nashua ranked number one in these many years. Why do we put that? Because it's not bad to have ranks. So if we take away the system and stop having the kids to push themselves, be competitive, competition is not bad, it's drive you to become good, that's why America brings so many patents and technologies, because we want to be good. And if we take away their opportunity, people will think, why would I move to Nashua? There are so many young families are moving in, what's my incentive to move to Nashua? If the school is far away from Boston, I live in Nashua, so if commute and, if, commute is already bad, if education is gone, then what is the incentive? So I think really it should be considered, taking this in, as said, nobody were aware of this whole motion to be passed, so I think I will really appreciate if the Board can consider it. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to say thank you to all of the parents and students who came out tonight. I know this is a commitment on a school night, and I appreciate you all taking the time to engage with us this evening. Does anyone have anything they'd like to say at this point on the Board? Ms. Johnson?
Thank you very much. The night that we had the meeting back in May, I questioned why there were no parents here and why there was only about five students that was in the audience, and I wanted to know if in fact any notices had gone out. So I asked Ms. Consella today about all this, and I'm gonna just read what was written to me. "Hi Paula, we did not send a letter directly to parents from this office that I am aware of. We did notify the GPA committee of the date that it was going to be held by the Board of Ed, although the motion came three meetings later. The topic of GPA showed on four different dates, October twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-one, the eighth of twenty-twenty-one, February twenty-first of twenty-two, and May twelfth of twenty-two. It is incumbent upon the student representatives to be the conduit between the Board of Ed and the student government, and they did bring some students who were concerned. But look at, look at what's sitting in the audience tonight. This was not here May twelfth, so I voted against everything because I felt there was no transparency. And I feel for all of these because I've been questioning about the weighted GPA and the rank system. I don't wanna, I wanna raise the bar, not lower the bar. So as we say here..." "...we do not typically make it a practice to notify specific groups about the agenda items. Per RSA ninety-one A, we post our agendas, that's the right to know. But the question is, is that if you're gonna do something like this and remove it, which I'm not in favor of it, you would make sure that you start like around when an eighth grade class is gonna start, so you have everybody clearing through the high schools that have already made their decision. So if we ask our students to make decisions on their classes, and they do that, what's wrong with them being competitive like that? I don't have a problem with competition, but I can't see taking it away when they've already worked so hard at this point in time. So I'm gonna ask to rescind, to make a motion to rescind our vote, bring it back to the Board again, either at the next meeting or at a special Board meeting."
So are you, I guess my question is, as this is not on the agenda, are you making a motion to have a special meeting to revisit the topic? Are you making a motion to reconsider it right now and add it to our agenda this evening, or are you making a motion to add it to the next agenda?
Well, I would like to make a motion to hold what's the vote that we had at this point in time, to bring it back and revisit the whole discussion on this, because, I mean, these students went out and got petitions signed, and if you give them another week or two, I'm gonna guarantee you, they're gonna have pages and pages and pages of it. I mean, they're taking part of their education, they're, we've asked students to become part of their education, be responsible and accountable, and that's what they're doing, and we took it away from them. So I'm, so however you wanna make the motion, I'm asking that we don't do anything right now and take away the GPA and the weighted GPA and the ranking, bring it back to the Board at a special meeting, and let's revisit the whole thing and discuss it all over again.
Okay. Any other thoughts on this? I'm inclined to agree with Ms. Johnson on revisiting the topic. We have a new assistant superintendent, we have a new superintendent. It seems like our communication and educational philosophy has adjusted since July, so I would be inclined to hear from administration and people at a, at a subsequent meeting, whether it's a special meeting or the very next one. So I think I saw Ms. Brown's hand, I see Ms. Dar, wait, let me write it down in order.
Oh, we have a motion, I made a motion.
Brown.
It wasn't second.
Darling, I didn't get the motion. And Sahu. All right, so the motion is very specifically, you move to...
Not do anything with the weighted GPA and the ranking at this point in time and bring the discussion back to either a special Board meeting or the next Board meeting.
Okay. And do we have a second for that?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Claffey. I'm just gonna give Ms. Gilio a second to write it out in a legible fashion. No, you're good. It needs to be so someone can read it later, so, better to write it properly.
It was second by Mr. Claffey?
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, and then I saw some hands, I, just probably because I was looking in that direction, I saw Ms. Brown first, then Ms. Darling, then Mr. Sahu.
I feel like Mr. Sahu's gonna have a good perspective on this.
Okay.
Sure, I'll go first. So, um, I really wanna tell you how much I appreciate parent and family and student involvement. Every single one of your kids that got up here tonight, it takes a lot of guts to get up in front of adults, especially on TV, and come out here, so thank you, and shout out to Sri, who I used to coach in basketball. But I, and I think that a little bit of historical perspective is important on this subject. I understand that there wasn't a huge turnout the night that we had that GPA class rank meeting where you've made our final decision, but this is actually a discussion point that's been in front of the Board since 2016, was the first time that it was approached. We created a task force, which was, had started, it's... We created a task force which was, had started, it's, so actually it was started by, I think maybe five student reps ago? Several, many. And with a lot of student input, a lot of data, a lot of research to universities, both locally, regionally, nationally, to see what kind of system is best for students moving forward. Unfortunately, so we were actually originally supposed to get a recommendation from this committee in spring of 2020, I think. And I remember that because it was actually almost right after I came on the Board of Education. And my perspective was actually much like everyone in the audience today. I actually would have said every single thing that you got up here and said. However, after a lot of discussion and input from administrators, from teachers, people in task force, parents, and particularly students, and students that were the highest achieving students were the ones that were really passionate about this. The times have changed and the perspectives have changed and what drives student motivation to succeed, it should be different than it is. That we had a lot of experiences were leading to cheating. There were a lot of experiences where students in the very top ranking tiered system were not treating each other respectfully. But that's not even really the, the root of the problem is, we want students to take those AP classes. We want them to take dual enrollment classes at the university. Do you know that you can do that? You should do that as juniors and seniors, you should do that. We want you to take honors level classes because you wanna learn about the subject matter and the material that's in those classes. We want you to take the nationally ranked CTE programs that were actually going by the wayside because, via a lot of students who were eligible because they didn't have access or because they didn't have the weighted GPA. So I think it should be clear, your GPA hasn't gone away. You're, there is still a point system in place which still yields to magna cum laude, summa cum laude. All those things are still gonna show up and be celebrated. You're gonna get a cord around your neck and something to raise you up and lift you up and credit for what you're doing. But you're also going to get the intrinsic motivation for taking those classes. So, all that said, my perspective is unlikely to change. I understand your frustration about the communication. It's an ongoing problem in our district for pretty much everything, top to bottom. And I do think that that part of it was handled wrongly. But I am disinclined to bring it back in front of the board because this issue actually has gotten, it's, like I said, it's been going on since 2016. The recommendation of the committee was to put this into place. And I am sorry that there's, you know, anytime you make a big change like shift like this, it's shocking to a lot of people. So that's my perspective. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Ms. Darling?
I'm gonna be the unpopular one and I'm sorry for that. First of all, I wanna say thank you to everyone who got up and spoke, especially the students. I very much remember my first time speaking up there and I shook the entire time, so you all did way better than I did. I'm gonna ask that the families who are here tonight that are stressed and frustrated to take some time and Google about weighted GPA versus unweighted GPA when it comes to college admissions. I think a lot of the families are gonna be surprised to find that most colleges don't even have an official GPA requirement anymore. Because getting into college is no longer about the best test takers or paper writers. Colleges are more holistic than that in their admissions policy. Just as homeschoolers aren't judged based on class rank or GPA, neither are the many students coming from schools who have already done away with this years ago. To assume college admissions wouldn't consider students based on weighted versus unweighted GPA would be wrong. If you take an AP course, it's still recorded as an AP course. And admissions in college have plenty of experience in understanding different style transcripts from different types of education. Like is compared to like and the best are admitted. I wonder if class rank was never a thing. If you were told to explore your interest in options with those electives that you have, would you have taken the same classes or would you have chosen something else? What if, just maybe, you had chosen something else and that was how you discovered your passion? And it had happened to have nothing to do with that very carefully crafted four-year plan that a lot of you came up and talked about, which is incredibly impressive. I don't have a four-year plan now. I'm gonna say Tom Brady was amazing. Unfortunately, his 3.3 GPA would not have gotten him into the school that he played football for. Not with the scholarships that he had at least. And I wanna say that scholarships are available for a multitude of reasons. If you don't qualify for one that's based on class rank alone, you could very well qualify for one based on having a wart on your face or psoriasis. Or there's a whole list of like thousand funniest scholarships you can apply for, I urge you to look it up. And I really hope that some students in this audience are gonna be doing the Stuck at Prom duct tape scholarship. It's a lot of fun, look it up if you haven't heard of it. I do wanna say it's very clear that we have a miscommunication between the district and its families. And I am more than happy to see this get brought back to the board to keep talking about, because every time we talk about it, maybe we will get to reach more people and get to hear more opinions that we didn't hear last time. And that's what's gonna end up changing or not changing opinions. I wanna know from any family, any, any individual listening right now, what the best way is for us to reach out to you? Is it getting those emails? Is it text messages? Is it Facebook? Is it, how do you guys want us to reach out so that you guys can be informed and we can partner together to make sure that we are all on the same page? Feel free to email me, text me, call me. All of my information is right on NSD's website. And that's it.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Darling. Mr. Sahu?
All right. I don't know if this is gonna be for my student comment or just
No, this is this discussion. And then you can have your own student comment during student comment period.
Fantastic.
Just wanna remind you, and I know Armani's not here, but you and Mr. Rogers are allowed to speak on any topic. You just have to raise your hand.
Right, right. And I think I, I do use that responsibility and privilege much to some of the board members disdain. But, you know, I just want to start off by addressing some of the comments made towards myself as well as Mr. Rogers. And to clear up some of the, I don't know how to say it, but just to clear up some of the misconceptions about the student member of the board position. We have this position here where we can give our input on any issue. We are elected by nearly our entire student body who decided that we were responsible and they trusted our opinion and they trusted us to do what we believed was right for our student body. And I think that if some students don't agree with some of the issues that I bring up or some of the opinions or viewpoints I, I take, I say, that's great for you. Come up to public comment, second public comment is always open. And if you're an underclassman, you know, run to be my successor in a few months, you know? But going back to it, being a student member, a student representative to the board, I do have a lot of restrictions. I do not have the liberty to send out a survey onto my Google classrooms without getting administrative approval, district approval, superintendent approval, as well as a recommendation to show it to all members of the board. And with the way that this class rank GPA task force issue has come up, it's kind of been like, oh, we're gonna talk about this at the next meeting and I get like a 24-hour notice. And then when I'm ready, then we're just gonna discard the topic and bring it up three months later. And puts me in a very uncomfortable position where it's, I'm trying my best to represent the student body as accurately as possible. But there is some things where I just cannot do to the fullest extent as I'd like. So that was addressed, Ms. Johnson. And the issues that, the concern she brought up. But going back to the topic of weighted GPA and class rank, I wanted to say that I briefly served on the task force as I joined the start of my term as a student member. And I do see members of the audience who were part of that task force. The task force included current students, former students, current student members of the board, former student members of the board, both directors of guidance, administrative assistants, the superintendent, both principals from both schools, as well as parents. And I think to the audience, you really would like to hear that there were also college admissions representatives who were on that task force. So we had a variety and a wide range of input when making these decisions. And I will say that I, when I was on the task force, there were decisions and votes made that were put in the final recommendation that I didn't agree with. And I'll be the first to say it. But we have to go with what the majority agreed with and what the recommendation was made. We've had this discussion for numerous different issues on the board where we don't like a recommendation that's brought up. But you know what, we just have to trust what comes out of our committees. We have to trust who's in our task forces and we have to trust the research that was presented. But going back to weighted GPA, and I'll address some of the things more specifically. I feel like I should have been more prepared knowing the backlash of this, but that's my fault. But I think that every student, parent, or member of the Nashua School District has their own experiences. And it's important that when us as a board makes any rational decision, we can't invalidate any other experience in favor of one experience. We have so many different types of students in the district. We have extensions, foundation students, we have students who offer primarily our CTE coursework, or students that take dual enrollment classes, or the primarily honors and AP students, where, which I fall under that category. You might be confused why I'm so against weighted GPA and class rank when I've taken 13 APs. But it's, you have to understand, there, this is a very complicated issue. And there is no disadvantage in college admissions if we are to get rid of weighted GPA and class rank. I wanna emphasize that and I know that no member of the board can refute that claim. We've had the evidence brought up for years now. I remember maybe on the last meeting when we talked about this and brought up the common data set for a variety of public universities, private universities, Ivy League institutions. The evidence is unrefutable. And we have this 5.4 GPA scale which offers an incentive for taking AP and honors courses. But I just want to say, in the words of our own guidance department at Nashua South, not a single college looks at our weighted GPA system and takes it seriously. In fact, they laugh. It is very inflated. And personally, when I was on the task force, I wish that we could have just changed the weighted GPA system. But that's not the recommendation that went forward, you know? And we're not gonna go back as a task force and reevaluate years of research, that's just not efficient. We've been doing this since 2016. And additionally, if once, since we have gotten rid of weighted GPA, you're still gonna be taking these AP and honors courses. If you look at your transcript unofficial or official, they're gonna see, you took AP World History. You took AP Calculus AB. You took honors English 1. They're gonna see your course rigor and they're gonna take that into account. They're going to, some colleges, they have their own scale. When they calculate GPA, they don't look at any of the school's scales. But some colleges just look at the unweighted GPA solely and they take into account your course rigor with the rigor that, the maximum rigor that your school provides. And we did send out surveys, sent out to all high school students, faculty. But unfortunately for some of the members of this audience, these surveys were distributed before most of the students in the public comment were even in high school. So unfortunately, your viewpoints were not being represented when making this decision as a representation for the entire school district years to come. We heard tonight that some students said that without a rank, they won't be motivated to take any hard classes. And to that, I just would like to remind everyone that if your underlying goal is just to be successful in your academic career or even to have a successful college admissions cycle, take the classes you're interested in. Take the hard classes, but don't force yourself to take unnecessary weighted courses. It doesn't have to be like this. And that is one of the many reasons why we've moved to this new system. And I just wanna say that the task force called almost like hundreds of colleges and all of them said that class rank and weighted GPA did not have a significant impact on college admissions. And they deliberated on this before I was on the task force and before I was in high school. The board has seen this data, I don't know if the data is public, what was given, but it is, because it was presented at board meetings. So if you guys are to look in the archives, like you will find the statistics, the data, everything brought up by the task force. And many high schools around the country have already made the switch to an unweighted GPA system to get rid of class rank. So instead of being a trailblazer as we try to be in the Nashua School District, we've actually been lagging behind on this trend. Hollis Brookline doesn't have a rank, Bishop Gerton doesn't report a rank. You see some highly prestigious college preparatory high schools such as Phillips Exeter Academy or St. Paul's School, and they don't have a rank. And you can see their students seem to be successful, right? So I wanna say that this, these two factors of weighted GPA and class rank are not the make or break for your child's college career. There will be a reward for academic achievement through the new Latin honors system. But as the district that says to, that, that claims to promote equity, I just wanna remember that the voices heard tonight seem to primarily be honors and AP students. When, and I, like I said, as a fellow honors and AP student and student athlete, like some in the audience, like I agree with some of the members of the community. I agree that there are very valid points being said. But we have to remember that if you look at the overall demographics of our high school students and what academic level coursework they're taking, this is a minority versus a large majority, which, like we said, we haven't been having good communication. And I've been saying this for many meetings now. I said it at the last meeting that we've been having a communication and transparency issue. And if we were to resolve this, you know, maybe if we did get those verbatim minutes and people saw what we were saying meetings and meetings ago, you know, maybe we wouldn't have issues like this. And that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Sahu. It sounds to me like we have, hold on, we have a couple of issues, neither of which were on tonight's agenda, so I don't want to spend a lot more time talking about it, given that we have a whole agenda that we haven't even started. Having said that, it sounds like what we're hearing is some very concrete evidence that the district has had a communications problem, which we were aware of. But I think the magnitude is becoming inescapably clear. And so that's something I'm going to ask Mr. Pasca to bring back to Dr. Andreid and ask them to come back to the board with how we can do better on communicating things to the district. Because I know we've talked about in the past, the board doesn't have a staff to do direct communication. So what can we do to make sure that things that happen at these meetings get out consistently? And I know Dr. Andreid has started a newsletter every week after our meetings, which is a good, a good starting place. The second issue, of course, is this weighted GPA and class rank. I'll take a couple more comments and then I'm gonna ask that we vote on the motion on the table. If that, unless we have significant objections to that. Ms. Johnson, Ms. Brown?
Thank you. You know, like I said, I asked for this memo and had nothing against the student reps. It was just I wanted to get the paper trail here, that why was there nobody here on the May 12th meeting? And as I'm looking at the faces in the audience here, there's nothing we're gonna be able to say tonight that's gonna make parents happy because they weren't part of the process. Being that I don't have any kids in school, I have no skin in the game with this. So my kids aren't gonna be affected by whichever year because I don't have any students in the system. So I wouldn't vote either way, you know, for the, for the weighted or the non-weighted because some, one of my kids would be affected by it, let's say. But what I'm saying is that we had no transparency. Our former superintendent sat here with it that night and I asked. I questioned this because I didn't think it was fair that we didn't have parent input. Because parents, students, parents still make the final decision most of the time and the students come home and usually sit down with their parents and talk about their education. And it's a very important piece. Because by the time they're getting to high school, they have to know what they wanna start taking to put themselves in that right direction, bless them. So, again, this is why I wanna bring it back. I think it's important. I think we need to listen to more the community because it seems like there has not been very much transparency since I've been on the board, and this is my third, third year basically on the board. And I think And I think we do a disservice to the community who pays the taxes to have these building, to have the classes, to let us sit on the board here. And when we don't listen, and I'm listening to all the students here, they're very passionate about this. They feel like...
...a very small part of the students and the parents.
All right, so I'm going to ask that we not yell out from the audience, only because we don't have microphones back there, and anybody watching at home or watching the recording later cannot hear what you said.
And so I think we should give everybody in the city an opportunity to literally weigh in on this, whether they want the weighted or they don't want the weighted GPA and the class ranking. So this is why I'm asking if we can bring it back and have another discussion on it at this point in time. Because if it doesn't change, it just goes the way we've made a plan. If we're going to change it, then we have to do it now.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Ms. Brown, then Ms. Gilio, no, okay, Ms. Gilio, and then Mr. Claffey.
Okay, I just have a question for administration. Are there plans to talk about this in going forward? Or is this, tonight is the big opportunity for us to hear from the people who spoke so eloquently tonight? I'm not sure what our district is looking at going forward because this is obviously a significant discussion.
Certainly, I know Mr. Richard and Mr. Burns are certainly open to having an informational night to explain the thought process, but I believe there's other concerns here. But if, again, it's the decision of the board to move forward, the decision that was made in May, Mr. Burns and Mr. Richard will certainly be open to having informational nights at their schools to explain the process, probably not as good as Mr. Sahu did, but certainly to explain what occurred and how this process played out, and it was just not a spur of the moment thing, but something that occurred over several years. Again, if there's a motion to be accepted to kind of have another discussion about this, I think we will be hearing from members of the administration kind of about how we got here and about this process.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Claffey.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Acting Chair. Thank you for coming out. First of all, I want to reiterate what our student reps and Mr. Sahu said. If you want to be a qualified candidate, if you want to be attractive to a top institution of higher learning, take AP and honors classes, regardless of whether they're weighted or not. And if you don't want to get into a top college, don't. If your only incentive is that boost, that prize, and I taught AP classes for about 15 or 16 years, I had plenty of students who only seemed to be there because they were worried about the bump. So if you're a junior, you've committed to honors and AP, good for you. That's an advantage. The second thing I want to say is, I hope you come back if this motion passes, and please come to us with some evidence that this puts our students at a disadvantage. Because I can't find it. I know the College Board, I just, I went on their website, they said over half of high schools in this country no longer provide class rank. I had a conversation with a friend, she was worried about her students' qualifications or candidacy at Northeastern. I called Northeastern, I spoke with somebody. The parent could not believe that Northeastern would rank 90,000 applications. Well, guess what the admissions officer said at Northeastern? This was a personal conversation. Yeah, I pity those people, but they do, 90,000 people. If you're interested in UMass system, go to their website. There's a calculator. You enter your grade, you enter your GPA, you're going to see that the weighting is different, but please come back here when we do take this up and provide us with some kind of evidence that our students are at a disadvantage.
Thank you.
Otherwise, I don't know, I'll change my mind.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Claffey. All right, on that, the motion is to, can you read it again?
Mrs. Johnson moved to not do anything to the weighted GPA and class rank until a future meeting of the board.
Thank you. I'm sorry, did I miss you, Ms. Oden?
No, I just didn't realize you were going to vote right then. I think I would like to abstain. I was not on the board when the decision was made. I remember 2016, I spent 12 years on the board. I've been off the board for six months, and during that six months, a decision was made. I appreciate everything Mr. Sahu said to bring me up and refresh me, and I do remember the first time it was brought up at a board meeting six years ago. But I was not here for the decision, so I feel it would be in the best interest of everybody for me to abstain from the decision. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, so on the motion that Ms. Gilio just read, Ms. Brown? I just turned my mic. Oh, I was like, I'm ready, okay. Those in favor of Ms. Johnson's motion to bring this back at a future meeting to really kind of delve deep in it a little bit more, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay.
Two nays.
Two nays and one abstention. Motion. Okay. Five to two that we will bring it back. All right.
Yep.
Five to two that we'll bring it back. In the meantime, Mr. Poska, if you don't mind having a conversation with Dr. Andreid, and I will speak to Ms. Bishop, who's not here as well, and we'll let the superintendent and the president of the board discuss whether to have a special meeting or to put it on next month's agenda. And then also, in part of that discussion will be how to communicate effectively with the community so that people who want to be a part of that conversation are aware of it and know that the invitation is always open. Okay? Any other? Okay, good. So, back to our agenda. Oh, oh no, hold on. Well, my screen turned off. And since I'm going paperless, I don't have it right in front of me. Okay. So we are at superintendent's comments. So thank you for your patience with us, Mr. Poska, as we played with the agenda this evening. And I'll leave it to you.
Certainly, due to illness, Dr. Andreid is not available to be here this evening, but he does want me to share his well wishes, and he's really excited to share the following accomplishments that we're going to talk about in the next couple of minutes. First and foremost, we are delighted to tell you that the Nashville School District has been selected among a national pool of applicants to join the League of Innovation Schools. And it's only one of four New England school districts currently serving as a member of the league, and we were the first New Hampshire school district to be part of this league. We look to the membership to keep us moving forward as a school district, as a place that fosters creativity and innovation. Being a member of the league offers us access to a network of similar forward-thinking schools to share best practices in teaching and learning. The League of Innovative Schools is part of Digital Promise, an organization devoted to advancing equitable educational systems, which is what we are all about. We will be back to you with more information after our first meeting later this fall. There is some great news from the National Education Foundation. Thirteen members of our staff are winners of the 2022 Excellence in Education Awards. The foundation is set to present the awards on Thursday, October 26, at Sky Meadow Country Club, and has extended an invitation for us to attend. Collectively, our winners represent 219 years of experience with the Nashville schools. Six are from the elementary schools, three from the middle schools, and four from our high schools. Congratulations to the following. Emily Crucial from Fairgrounds Elementary School. Maureen Curran from Nashville High School North. Sarah DeSaulners from Penacheck Middle School. Megan Durgan from Charlotte Avenue Elementary. She Marie Eckstein from Charlotte Avenue Elementary. Roberta Flanagan from Fairgrounds Middle School. James Guy from Nashville High School South. Sherry Gratton from New Searls Elementary. Anastasia Lopez from Elm Street Middle School. Kristen Mayart from Nashville High School North. Nate Maserol from Nashville High School South. Diane Merchant from Mount Pleasant Elementary School. And Julie Oliver from Birch Hill Elementary School. Additionally, congratulations to Laura Short, the physical education teacher at both Amherst School, Amherst Street Elementary, and Mount Pleasant Elementary School for being named the 2023 Elementary Physical Education Teacher of the Year. The New Hampshire Association for Health Physical Education, Recreation, and Dance will honor her at its annual conference in mid-November 2022. Laura has been a part of physical education for nearly four years and has been part of the statewide organization since pursuing the profession. Laura also serves as an officer of the organization, working to promote its mission of professional standards, quality programs, professional development, legislative support, and regional and national affiliation. Again, congratulations to Laura. Earlier today, we have learned that five students from Nashville High School South, the class of 2023, have been named National Merit Scholar semifinalists. This is an incredible honor, so we want to congratulate Matt Alex, Aditya Bakshi, Nicholas Chung, Janavi Palarapu, and Jason Chu. Congratulations. These students who will take, thank you. These students who take the PSAT may qualify to enter the College Board competition for one of these prestigious scholarships. The PSAT is a standardized test that measures reading skills, math problem-solving skills, and writing skills. Congratulations to our merit semifinalists for achieving a high level of success. We are very proud of you, and thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Mr. Poska. All right, going around for board response. Ms. Johnson?
I just want to say congratulations to all our students and also our teachers.
Okay, great. Ms. Oden?
I'd like to echo that. Congratulations to the students, our teachers, our district, and congratulations on being accepted into the, I think it's a digital promise in the telegraph.
It is through a digital promise, and it's part of the League of Innovative Schools.
I'm so happy that we're moving forward that way. So thank you, and thank you to all the people who came and spoke tonight, the students, the parents. You were all so articulate and so patient and polite. I really appreciate hearing from you. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Brown? Ms. Lambeer?
Just congratulations to all the teachers and the students and stuff, and to thank all the people in the audience tonight for coming. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Darling?
I think I've said enough tonight.
Mr. Claffey?
Thank you to the National Education Foundation for their continued support of our schools and teachers.
And Ms. Gilio?
I just want to thank Mr. Poska for those four pieces of wonderful news tonight. It's very uplifting. Thank you.
Yes, I agree. It's very nice to hear successes every time we come to a meeting and to know what a good job our teachers and our students are doing, excelling in a bunch of different areas. Okay, so the next item on our agenda is the student member of the board's comments. And it turns out, I'm glad I let Mr. Rogers go early. And Mr. Sahu?
It has been a long night. Yeah, I'll keep my remarks brief, but you know, Nashville South, once again, won. The fall battle of the bridge. Too bad Mr. Rogers isn't here for me to say it, but we're three for three for our terms on the board, just saying. And additionally, big congrats to all of the Nashville High School South seniors who qualified to be National Merit semifinalists. It's a very big accomplishment, and it has a great reflection on their academic achievement as well as a great reflection on the district and the district teachers preparing our students for success to reach these new heights. And I just want to let everyone in the Nashville South community know that if you're a senior, the Photography Club is offering free senior photos for all students who are facing any sort of financial strain. So you can sign up on Google Classroom, and those will take place this Saturday from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. at Greeley Park. But that's all. Thank you.
That's lovely. Thank you. Okay, next we have Committee on Finance and Operations. Ms. Johnson and Mr. Smith, are you here for that? Yep. You can come down if you want. Are you ready to begin?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
Okay.
The Committee on Finance and Operations met on September 12, 2022. We have Jackson Nardone here in the audience because we're asking to approve the Eagle Scout project at Lead Street, and if he can, if he'd like to give us a short little presentation, that would be great.
Yes, please, Mr. Nardone, come down. I apologize for keeping you waiting for so long. I could have done that first. Oh, you have a handout for us?
Yeah.
Okay.
I have a pamphlet for you guys to look at. It is, not really a pamphlet, it's kind of just a, it's a slideshow.
Okay. Do you need the computer and the screen, or just a handout?
There's three of them, so I think we can spread it out pretty evenly.
Okay.
I don't need one.
Oh, yes, we do have it in our packet. It is included on the website as well.
I want to keep it brief. I know we've had a long night. Just looking through it, the basic idea is that I want to build a bridge for the safety of the children. This bridge is being constructed for the, under the regulations of rail safety, bridge safety, and ADA safety, that being, I don't, I'm not sure if the wordage is ADA, but wheelchair accessible. Yeah, do you guys have any other questions?
Could you refresh my recollection from the finance meeting, which was very long last time? Where exactly the bridge is going at Lead Street? Because I'm trying to visualize the site. Is it to get from Lead Street into the park?
There's a wooded area next to the park.
Yep.
If you walk behind the school, there should be a gazebo area.
Yes.
From the gazebo towards the wooded area, that's where the bridge is going to be.
Oh, okay. Okay, thank you. Anyone else have any questions? Mr. Smith?
Just to comment to amplify, there were some previous Eagle projects in those woods behind the school, and one of them was to build a path, and then another one was to build some benches, I believe. So Jackson's project will, his bridge will, be a bridge to that path.
Yep.
And so it kind of connects with prior projects. I've looked at his project, I've looked at particularly the structural means of putting the bridge together, and everything looks good to me. I did suggest that he talk to the people in City Hall and get their viewpoints, and there's communication going back and forth. I'm not aware of how much further you've gone with it, with them.
A little bit.
Okay, so I guess my recommendation would be to approve the project pending City Hall approval.
Okay. So, Ms. Johnson, do you have a specific motion to, is the motion to approve the project pending City Hall approval?
Yeah.
Or just approve it for our end?
Well, we don't really need to approve it for City Hall. City Hall would approve it to the planning board if it has to go to the planning board or whatever, they would, they would look at it. So why don't we just approve it at our end?
Okay, that sounds reasonable.
For the project at Lead Street School.
Second. Okay, so that was seconded by Ms. Brown. So all in favor of approving the Eagle Scout project of Mr. Nardone at Lead Street School, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, unanimous. Congratulations, and thank you so much for your service to the community.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you too.
Okay, the next one. I move to approve the purchase of a 2022 Ford Escape for $32,845 from Croponey Ford to replace a 2008 Ford Escape with funding from the Driver Education Special Revenue Fund, 91.2201.9911-6088. 6081500.
Second. Who, second?
Ms. Brown?
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, seconded by Ms. Brown. All right, any comments or questions? All right, seeing none, all in favor of approving replacement for the driver's ed vehicle, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Oh, just note that Ms. Oden was out of the room for the last two votes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, so that affects that. Okay, so it was seven to zero.
Yep.
Both of them. Okay.
Okay, great. I'd just like to point out that my own vehicle is that old, and it has to last for my kid a couple more years till they're old enough to drive.
Okay, I move to approve the contracts with BERC -- I'm going to spell it because of my accent -- for $30,000, and with Ramapo for $20,000, with funding to come from the CSI grant.
Second.
Brown again?
Yep, seconded by --
Start looking over there.
By Ms. Brown.
Seconding.
Any comments or questions? Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
I move to approve the IRC Perkins grant in the amount of $39,986.79 for the purchase of the Festo system and associated equipment for CTE manufacturing program.
Second. Okay, thank you, Ms. Brown. Any comments or questions? No. I'd just like to say I'm encouraged that we continue to fund this program. I was excited when we brought it back a couple of years ago. These are really well-paying, highly sought-after jobs, so I think this is something that benefits all of our students, so. Ms. Brown?
In that vein, there's actually no student signed up for this program this year, sadly, which I --
That's shocking.
I agree that it is a wonderful program, so I think this kind of goes back to our communication issue. We really need to do a better job marketing some of our fantastic programs that we have that can set students up for a lifelong success. Thank you.
Absolutely. I mean, this is one of those jobs that puts you, sadly, in the middle class at 19. So, go ahead, Mr. Poska.
Along Ms. Brown's tracks, we did reach out to the Nashville Department of Education to inform them of what was going on, and they encouraged us to continue to pursue this grant to promote the manufacturing program and continue to grow it. So that is the goal, but certainly it speaks to the need to continue to grow and communicate what we are able to do within the program.
Yeah. Any other comments or questions? No? All right, all in favor of using the Perkins grant for the Festo system for CTE manufacturing, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
I'm going to ask one of my fellow members, board members that's on the committee, to make the next motion, because I voted against it, and I asked them if they wanted to vote for it, to send it to the full board, and I'll explain after the motion's made why.
Okay.
I wasn't going to vote for it.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. I appreciate the gesture of sending something that, as chair, you're opposed to, to the full board for consideration if that was the will of your committee, so thank you for that. Ms. Brown, were you going to bring it forward, or Ms. Oden?
I move to approve the additional $8,000 to M.E. O'Brien &amp; Sons for the Panthers Preschool Playground surface with funds coming from School District CTE Reserve Fund.
Second. Thank you, Ms. Brown and Ms. Lampier.
I'd like to speak on that, please.
Sure.
The reason why I would not -- I didn't vote for it was because they shorted themselves $20,000, which you would say, okay, you know, it's their mistake. But we're being asked to pay -- the ownership of the issue asked us to pay a portion of the overage of $8,000. So in that meeting, we had a bid of $30,000. Am I correct here, Penelope? And so it's $46,250, and M.E. O'Brien, $30,554. Well, if you added the $20,000 that they forgot to add in, their bid would have been So by rights then, the job would have been given to the other company. And I just felt, and I'm sure Mr. Smith will probably want to speak on it, I just couldn't in good conscience support this, paying them the $8,000, because when I added everything up, their bid would have been higher than the other company. And if you make a mistake, you really don't come back to the school district or homeowner and say them, oops, we made a mistake, we need you to give us the extra money. We don't need all of it, we'll only take part of it. It was your mistake. Somebody should have taken a second look at the invoicing, the measurements, and they didn't, and it's -- they need to, I hate to say it, eat it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. The work has already been completed, correct?
The work has been completed, yes.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Ms. Brown?
So I did choose to move this out of committee. I actually agree with Ms. Johnson's hesitance to move this forward. They will be bidding other jobs in the district. This is kind of like an act of goodwill, but we have seen this happen several times over the last -- well, since I've been on the board, so three years, but particularly coming through the JSSBC, a lot of things that are bidding are then coming up back higher and like significantly hundreds of thousands of dollars higher than they originally bid. And I am probably -- this is kind of like my last bit of goodwill that I'm going to be willing to put out there for people, just because we've worked with them before. We had another kind of dubious bid coming up recently where one of our architects that's currently working in the district bid tens of thousands of dollars lower than our other three architectural bids, and I'm wondering if that's then going to get just somewhere cycled back into the build project or once the project is finished. But I think we really need to start taking -- looking meticulously at our bid process and the whether we are -- and holding our companies accountable. So I am going to move this forward just because I will vote for it, because I voted for it in committee, for the $8,000 additional dollars. But I do -- I want to be clear to Mr. Smith that -- and our bid department, we need work done, but we need to start holding our companies accountable, because I don't think we've been doing that.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Oh, go ahead, Ms. Lampier.
So I was the one on the committee that was really in favor of moving this to -- move this forward. You know, we're not paying for lesser quality, as Mr. Smith wrote in his little write-up about this. The estimate was off by nearly 1,400 square feet, and the company, M.E. O'Brien, did the work. They put in an extra 1,400 feet, and they're asking for only $8,000, which is their amount to -- you know, they didn't pay for their labor, it just paid for the materials. We've worked with M.E. O'Brien before and have never had a problem with them before. I don't think it's really fair to punish M.E. O'Brien for any issues we might have with other companies, which I really, being on the JSSBC, I really haven't seen any issues with those companies. I feel like they're very honest, I've been doing work with them for many years and haven't had an issue with them. And of course, we also are going to be looking for someone to do the playground at the Franklin Street School very soon, and right now, as of right now, we only have two companies that were even willing to bid on this job. And if we don't continue to work with M.E. O'Brien, then we will only have one company that may bid, and then we won't have a choice between which one we want to work with. And so for all those reasons, I was in favor of paying the $8,000 extra dollars. So, yeah, so I just wanted to let everybody know my thoughts. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lampier. Go ahead, Mr. Claffey.
I just had a question for Mr. Smith. So, and Mr. Donovan, maybe you can check my math, but it seems to me, so it should have been about $50,000, the $20,000 off, about a 40% miscalculation. So the job itself, 3,500 feet, 1,400 feet off, that's 40% of the total. How does a firm make an error that huge?
Well, I can say, I observed the entire process, and they brought in -- they actually brought in the subcontractor, it wasn't M.E. O'Brien themselves, but the subcontractor did the work based on M.E. O'Brien's measurements. So I was watching the work progress, and it just stopped. There was a perfect square of this substance installed, and then everybody just disappeared. So I made some -- what -- why did you stop? The job's not done. And it was a little bit of a delay, but they finally came back and said, you miscalculated. So they had to -- so the subcontractor gave M.E. O'Brien exactly what they bid for, and then that's when they discovered that they had a -- didn't bid the right amount, and they had done a miscalculation on the total. So in the construction business, I mean, this doesn't happen all the time, but in my view, we got added value. So we got that initial piece that I saw was completed. That was $30,000. We then had them finish the job. We're only paying $8,000 for it, and they valued that as $20,000. We're only paying $8,000. That's what you call added value. We're getting something for paying for something. It's not like we're paying more money for the same product we already had them bid for. So that's why I feel we should pay them. You know, as far as, I mean, we go through the bidding process, we only -- we have to go by what's bid, and if architects come in and give us their bids and they help bid the other person, you know, that's who we go to, and we do have to hold their feet to the fire, absolutely. And through the construction projects we've had to date, we do hold their feet to the fire. You know, in the construction side of the house with the construction management, you've got subcontractors that really went out on a limb during this whole pandemic, and the prices, as you know, have gone crazy with steel and plywood and everything. We've seen increases. So we've -- actually, we're a little bit smarter in this more recent, the new middle school, we've actually built escalation fees into the contract so that we're not getting -- not paying more than what we originally intended. We were anticipating that these increases would occur. So I think it's all worked out pretty well, and I don't know if I've addressed everything, but the main thing is we received more than what we originally paid for, but we're -- and we're getting the complete project for less than what M.E. O'Brien would have otherwise charged us, and I feel pretty strongly we should pay it.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, Mr. Donovan, Ms. Gilio, and then back to Ms. Brown.
Yeah, just, I mean, Sean brought up a couple of situations. The construction of the school, I put that in a different category. We have a professional project manager helping us with that, et cetera. This was a situation where they finished the job and they took the risk they wouldn't get paid at all, okay? So that's, in fact, what happened. So in my mind, I'm like, okay, there's no guarantee they were going to get even the extra $8,000. And I understand, look, I'm more than happy not to pay people when they screw up. That's, you know, that's your job. If you're not good at it, you're going to go out of business. Now, Mrs. Johnson says, well, they, you know, the thought that they might have done it to win the bid, that's not what happened this time, and if someone was -- were to do that, we'd catch on. You know, we'd realize that this company low bids all the time, and then they come back with change orders left and right. So I don't really think that, in fact, that was the case this time.
Thank you, Mr. Donovan. I just wanted to know, Mr. Rogers is back. Welcome back, Mr. Rogers.
Hello.
Along with Mr. Sahu. When you're ready, Ms. Gilio.
Oh, yeah, I just had a question. If I'm looking at this correctly, so the total job cost $30,005 plus $8,000, so it came to $38,000, which is still significantly less than the $46,250 that we would have paid to the other bidder. So I am in favor of paying this $8,000. It's unfortunate that this happened, but I have complete confidence in our staff.
Thank you, Ms. Gilio. Ms. Brown? No? Okay. I appreciate all of the perspective on this, and I appreciate you sharing it all with the full board so that we can have the maximum amount of information as we make this decision. Just a small note on the JSSBC, we are still coming under budget on the two schools, the one that is like finished, but now we keep going back and adding more, still under budget, and then the one that's coming up despite huge, huge increases in construction costs worldwide over the last two years. So, Ms. Brown?
In relation to that, when we get to the JSSBC, I actually have a fee request for the committee, so.
So on the motion to approve the $8,000 to M.E. O'Brien &amp; Sons for the Panthers Preschool Playground, all in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay.
One aye.
Yep, Ms. Johnson.
Okay, you ready? Just give me one sec. Thank you. This is not easy for me. Well, I'm just not used to it, I guess. Okay, thank you. I move to approve the purchase of the Tomcat Pro 26-inch disc rider TC545V2-26TD from Cleanorama of Gorham, Maine, in the amount of $12,084.83. Funds will come from the plant operation miscellaneous equipment line 91.1.22.2620.71999.
Second. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Johnson and Ms. Brown. Any comments or questions regarding this -- it's like a floor cleaner, right? Yeah. Seeing none, all those in favor of purchasing the floor cleaner, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Go ahead.
Move to approve the anonymous donation of $10,000 to the Nashville High School North -- South, Nashville High School South, no, Nashville High School North, I was right the first time, football program. Get all these Ss and Ns in there, you know? Get all confused.
Second. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Johnson and Ms. Brown. Any comments or questions on this donation? Go ahead, Ms. Oden.
I'm going to abstain to ensure I do not have a conflict of interest on this vote.
Thank you, Ms. Oden. I'd just like to say thank you again to this anonymous donor. This is my fifth year on the board and the fifth time I've seen $10,000 come into the North Football Program. I don't know how many years they were doing it before, but the generosity is just amazing, and I know that our kids really appreciate it, so thank you.
All right, so all in favor of accepting the donation, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope. And one extension. Okay. Hang on, I have two pages. Do you have one more, Ms. Johnson?
I'm just waiting. I know, I'm sorry. That's okay. I don't do speed writing.
Okay.
But I think it's much more legible than when I do it, and you fill out more of the page.
I move to approve the August 2022 budget transfers.
The second. Okay, seconded by Ms. Lampier. Any comments or questions on the budget transfers for August? Nope. All right, all in favor of approving the August 2022 budget transfers, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
And that's it.
Thank you very much, Ms. Johnson.
You're welcome.
Can I just take a minute? In policy, we had talked briefly about bus passes and adding them to a future agenda and whether that should be policy or finance. Did we decide it would go to finance?
We didn't quite decide, but I think that probably would be good to go start maybe with finance and then go to policy.
Okay. All right, thank you, Mr. Donovan, thank you, Ms. Johnson.
You're welcome.
Great, so the next item on the agenda is policy, and I feel like we've been flying through policies lately, but we still have a big queue, so I'm just going to dive right in. I move that we approve policy JRA Student Records and Access-VERPA.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. I'll do this too. Any questions or comments on this? Any questions or comments on this policy update? Nope. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We, it says here, we tabled policy JCA for the next board meeting, so we don't actually need to, next board, next policy meeting, so we don't need to have a vote on that here. JCA is regarding, where did I write it down? JCA is regarding changing of school districts. So we will get some advice from our attorneys on that and it will come back in October's policy. So, I move to approve policy JEB, Age of Entrance, as amended.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. Any comments or questions on JEB, Age of Entrance? All right, all those in favor of approving JEB, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. I move to approve policy JF, Enrollment.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. I'm sorry, am I going too fast? I'll slow down.
No, I'm, my brain is slowing down, that's all. You're not going too fast. Okay. I'm fine.
All right, any comments or questions on JF enrollment? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? I move to approve policy BGD, Board Review of Admin Procedures, as amended.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And I move to approve BGF, Suspension of Policies.
I'll second.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Yep. All right, all in, oh, Ms. Brown?
Sorry, I'm trying to scroll down to find the policy. So I found a thing that just procedurally might make a bit of a conflict unless we start putting it, I'm really sorry, this is a big document. So I think the policy, and that's why I'm trying to find the actual wording, suspension of policies, there it is. It says, "The two policies which pertain to Insurinal Operations Board," wait a second here, what was I worried about? I apologize for my disorganization. So it says, "At a meeting for which proposed suspension has been, the majority vote of the entire board for which a suspension has been described in writing, or upon unanimous vote of the entire board membership when no such thing has written, been given written notice." Not that I ever think there's going to be anybody opposed to when we have the HR meetings right before. I think if we were to put this sentence, move to suspend the rules into our agenda, you'd just be able to avoid that happening because we do it every week.
You're right. I agree. We should ask Ms. Kinsella, when she types up the agendas, under policy, the first bullet should be recommend suspend the rules to consider items from today's HR meeting. And then the second bullet can be the personnel recommendations. And that would make it a little easier on the clerks, so this is selfish of me, because I wouldn't have to write it out on every single one.
I got that.
Any other comments or questions on BGF? Nope. Okay. All in favor of approving BGF, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. All right, that's all I have for policy. I forgot, I'm also doing this, it's too much. All right, curriculum and evaluation, Ms. Brown. I have actually it open in two, two different windows, one from the website and one from our email, so that I can have one for attachments and one for the agenda.
All right, so we met on September 19th, 2022. First motion, I move to approve the proposed agreement with Confianza in the amount of $75,500 to be paid for by Esser Funds.
Second.
Ms. Johnson, second.
That's fine. Okay. Oh, no, who, I wasn't looking, who was it?
I wasn't sure.
I don't know, I think.
Oh, you said it's simultaneous?
Yeah, I think it was simultaneous. We'll go with Ms. Lampier because she's.
Okay.
That's fine. To the right.
Yeah, you can take turns.
I have a question about this. Is this the same or different as the presentation that we were going to have this evening?
It's connected to it. I think it's an overview of how we've, we've partnered with Confianza to address our T1 instruction and the work that we've done, not only with our administrators, but also the work we're planning to do with the teachers over the upcoming year. So this is, we're going to provide an overview of that work and that planning to get here, but this is so that Confianza can get paid to keep supporting us with that work.
Okay. And that presentation is on the video from the 19th, correct?
Correct.
Yes, okay. Right, that was my only question. Did anyone else have any questions? Okay. All in favor of approving the proposed agreement with Confianza for $75,500 to be paid by Esser Funds, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Excellent.
So I move to approve the proposed agreement with the Teaching and Learning Alliance in the amount of $23,900 to be paid for by Esser Funds.
I'll second.
I'm sorry.
Thank you, Ms. Lampier.
I was thinking about something.
All right, any questions or comments regarding the agreement with the Teaching and Learning Alliance? Okay. All in favor of approving the agreement for $23,900 to be paid by Esser Funds, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Nope. All right, great. Ms. Johnson?
I just wanted to say that I didn't get to attend the curriculum evaluation that night, but I did watch it over the weekend. And I just want to say, those two teachers gave an excellent presentation. I mean, they were talking about the Wilson, what, what, okay, Orton Gilliam, Orton Gilliam. And a friend of mine talked about that program all the time and how much good it does for our students and the lower grades to get them to read, to get that foundation. And I hope that that program kind of gets brought into the whole system here, especially for the younger grades because, and especially those two teachers. That teacher from Led Street, she was just phenomenal.
Oh, yeah.
Explaining the whole program and, and the passion that she had for this. And so I don't want to leave the other teacher out. And she was talking about special ed. But the way they were just talking about that reading program, I mean, we need more readers and by the time they get to third grade, if they don't have that foundation, you know? And they were talking about one student that was like five years behind in reading, I think in the middle school, I think it was special needs. But they were just great presentations, so I just wanted to let administration know and Mr. Markuno that, thumbs up. You know, you never listen to me.
Well, thank you, thank you, Ms. Johnson.
You're welcome.
All right, I see Ms. Brown and then Ms. Odin.
Oh, I actually just wanted, I was gonna just second what Ms. Johnson had to say. They were fantastic and I, and it was wonderful to have these teachers who are experts in their craft, who are then striving to get more, more training to, they can actually then go and teach teachers the skills to lift our reading programs up and really create a really balanced learning curriculum. And so it was honestly, we, we over, went over their time in, for the presentation, asked them more questions, and it could have gone on for another 30 minutes. It was, it was really engaging and awesome, so thanks. And Dottie was there, too.
Yeah, I went to the meeting to listen to them and was not disappointed at all. What they were saying is both programs that they're using hit a lot of our students that are dyslexic. And having taught first, second grade for years, I understand that. And it was just amazing listening to them. Another thing I was impressed with, they, Dr. Safdie had a spreadsheet on, on the screen that evaluated all the professional development for September 13th. And it was just amazing, the high marks that the professional development got from our teachers. And that's important because if you're going to take a day and have teachers for professional development, you want it to be impactful. And they certainly did appreciate it. There was one that scored a little bit lower, and that was the one on dyslexia. But what was explained to us is so many of our teachers have gotten a lot of training and dyslexia that they wanted to go deeper, which is great. And she said, we'll go, we'll go there next time. It was just an absolutely outstanding presentation and the whole meeting was just excellent. Matter of fact, I went over and told Dr. Safdie I thought it was one of the best curriculum development meetings I've seen. So kudos, kudos to our, our administrators, to our principals, our teachers, and I thank them all for being honest and, you know, taking advantage of this wonderful professional development that was offered. So, because often, often you don't see the results of professional development. I know I filled out a lot of forms and never knew what, where the information went, but to have a spreadsheet on it and to show that we, we did our job in providing good PD for our teachers was just an excellent presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. It's so nice to know that we had something meaningful that the teachers got value out of because they're giving up a day just to be there learning and we want them to get meaning out of their hours that they're putting in. And they certainly don't, you know, want to just spend their time learning something they've already learned.
Can I just say, I think there were close to 20 different PDs on the sheet that were evaluated, so they had a tremendous variety of things to choose from. Thank you.
And I was struck on this one by, like, the play, the play-based aspect of it. And it, it seemed like something that both the teachers and the students were finding fun, which is pretty exciting for school. So, any other comments or questions? Okay, seeing none. On the motion, oh, wait, I've changed screens now. On the motion to approve the agreement with the Teaching and Learning Alliance in the amount of $23,900 to be paid from Esser, all in favor, say aye.
We voted aye.
Oh, we did vote? Oh.
Passed eight to zero.
Well, I don't know where I am then. Okay.
School board meeting.
School board meeting, no, I mean, on my agenda.
North High School.
Oh, my goodness. Okay. Anything else from curriculum and evaluation? No? All right, great. Onto the Committee on Human Resources. And she does have meeting held earlier this evening, but if we could have that extra bullet, I think it would be helpful.
That would be helpful. Hi, so our committee met earlier this evening, Mrs. Odin and I were in attendance, and I would like to suspend the rules so we can consider the personnel recommendations made at that meeting.
I'll second. Okay, thank you, Ms. Odin, for seconding that motion. So on, I just kind of write it in the margin. So on the motion to suspend the rules, as the HR committee met earlier this evening, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Nope. Okay.
What?
Back to you. So eight to zero on suspending the rules.
Okay, and then.
And then now the personnel recommendations.
Okay. So now, we, we recommended, we voted in support of the personnel recommendations dated September 26th, presented earlier tonight.
Second that.
Okay, so the motion is to approve the personnel recommendations dated today, September 26th, 2022, seconded by Ms. Odin. Okay. Any questions or comments? Nope. All in favor of approving the personnel recommendations, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Anything else from HR this evening?
No.
Nope. Okay. Liaison reports. JSSBC, I wasn't able to make it this last time. Did someone take notes? Is that you again?
Yes. I'm sorry.
Sorry, Mrs. Gilio, we have been wearing a lot of hats tonight.
I don't do well wearing a lot of hats, but yes, okay. So, the JSSBC met last week on September 22nd, and it started off with the architect's report. All is going well with the new McCarthy Middle School. They're working on designs right now for the outside athletic needs and the play area equipment. Penachuck is going well. Due to the proposed change of roof units for dehumidifying, a few of the solar panels may need to be moved or relocated. Nothing new on fairgrounds, they're just about, almost up to speed with that. Franklin Street, they're still meeting to coordinate construction work. Birch Hill and Main Dunstable, they're working on schematic documents that will be then submitted to Harvey Construction. So the construction companies report said that the new Mustang logo has been incorporated into the building design for McCarthy and will appear on the gym floor and other places in the building. They, they, they completed a passage culvert that's to protect the indigenous life so that they can get across the indigenous species, wildlife that just live there, heathers, salamanders. Okay.
They're endangered.
No, no, they are, they're very cute. Power to, they'll have power to the building by the end of October, so they won't need to use generators. Parking will be at the front of the school, will be done before winter sets in. Building C, which is the first constructed building, they're going to be working on drywall within three weeks, and they've started on the roofs. Penachuck, the Learning Commons is still on track to be completed for mid-December. They're doing a few finishing touches on the gym, but on rainy days, the students are able to use it. And fairgrounds, they added wall protection to student common areas because they were realizing that the walls were being marred and kind of damaged, and so they've done a little extra work to protect those. And they also replaced plantings at fairgrounds that did not survive the year and that it's at no cost to us because that was part of the original contract. Franklin Street, the stair towers were installed, the front entry work is in progress. And we heard from the energy people who are working on the Franklin Street Project, EEI. The third floor is doing very well and the first and second floors will be finished in about two weeks as far as energy goes. And then there will be a roof put on next summer, and at that time, solar panels will be discussed because that can't be done until after the roof's replaced. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Gilio. Ms. Brown?
So I actually have a few requests from the JSSBC for some updated reports. I'd like you, that's, and I actually am adding to my list. Can you double-check the timeline on the Penachuck Gym to see that they are able to use it during the school day? As of last week, I believe, the Penachuck students volleyball team was practicing at the Nashua North Gym, so.
That was not revealed in the meeting.
Yeah, Mr. Pasca, do you know the answer to that?
I was, happened to be at Penachuck today, I believe they were adding the stands, putting the stands in, so I believe the thought process was end of September, beginning of October, that the gym would be back online for utilization by all students. So I think they're close to being done, fully done with the project. I think all the, the gym floor is, has been completed, it's been, the painting is completed, it's mac, waxed, and the last piece is putting in the stance. And when I was there today, that's where they were at.
Okay.
Can I just add to that? Just, we were told that students were playing on the floor la, we were told last Thursday, I think they said earlier in the week, that last week, they were playing on the floor, but they still had to finish it.
Okay. All right, thank you for the clarification. So the second thing, I have a question about the edited budget. And so I'd really like for somebody in the committee to give, if you could, give an update next week or next month. So I was under the impression of the original budget for the project, for the middle, the new middle school specifically, McCarthy Middle School, was $79 million plus $2 million for the, from the city's contingency fund. And then in 2019, we signed a resolution, or the Alderman signed a resolution, bringing the new middle school cost to $81,178, I'm sorry, $178, so $81 million. I looked at an updated document recently this summer, in about July 22, June or July of '22, that says now the new middle school is at $95 million. says now the new middle school is at $95 million. So, I was wondering if I could get a breakdown of the reasoning and maybe like, and I prefer, I'd like to see a timeline of when those costs escalated, and if it's all materials, or if it is labor, or different underbidding, or anything like that. So if I could get an up, I would love to hear an update from the committee members on that, because that's, $95 million and $81 million are pretty far apart.
It is, and it, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Claffey, but I think a significant portion of that was regarding the price of steel increasing, like, three times its original cost. So when we originally costed out the project, and then when it was time to buy the steel, even though we bought it and stored it, it had gone up three times last January.
And in reference to that...
That's not a complete answer. I just...
Well, I was gonna say, in reference to that, we all, in the original quote for $81 million in that resolution, there was a contingency budget of 5% also. So I think we've kind of blown through that.
Oh, we definitely, yeah.
We were told that there's no, I just think, may I?
Go. I wasn't there last week, so I don't know the answers.
Mr. Smith would probably be best equipped to answer, address your concerns. But I, we did have a long, there was a long discussion about the contingency fund, how much has been expended, how much is left. And it seemed that Chairman Dowd didn't seem to be too concerned about draining all of that. So, but I think Mr. Smith would be able to...
Right. Did they provide on, I apologize, Thursday was the Elm Street Open House, which is why I was not there and I didn't watch it yet. Were there documents associated with it on the, it would be on the city website because the JS SBC is a joint between us and the city with the city chairing. Do you know if the updated financial documents were a part of last week's meeting?
Uh, no, I don't, no, like I said, there was a, a member of the joint committee raised concerns about how much is left. That's all. So...
Okay. All right. So, it seems like Mr. Smith and Alderman Dowd would be the ones to have that. Or maybe our CFO, who's waving his hand at me.
Yes. I mean, there was financial, each JS SBC has the financial packages at the back, and it'll show you the cost, where we are for each of the three schools and the total project. So that's in there. The, the, the 79 to 95, we'll check that and make sure the answer. But originally, the building went up $9 million just for steel. So the "just for steel" was $9 million. That has nothing to do with the contingency of the project. The contingency of the project is to deal with unknown circumstances, et cetera. But it did, I believe, there was an original bond of about $121 million for the middle school project. And then soon thereafter, we got, we went and got another $9 million to cover the steel on the new middle school.
Yeah.
So that's off the top of my head, but we'll get more firm numbers for you.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Donovan. That's what happens when I don't constantly stare in that direction. I, I miss things. Thank you. Okay. Do we have any other liaison reports? Ed Council is coming up next month, so we need to, as a board, figure out who's going to that. Because the last email I saw regarding the educational council was that Ms. Bishop had like a rotating list of who attends the ed council, and I don't know.
I don't think that was resolved yet.
So, so people who are interested in attending the next ed council meeting, if you could email Ms. Bishop so that we can make sure that we have at least two board members there, that would be fantastic. I don't have anything under unfinished business. New business. We have the MOU, which Mr. Mark Hu referred to earlier. It is in our packets. So, I'll go ahead and make the motion. So I move that we, oh, shoot, I lost it. Hold on. I just, okay. I move that we approve the MOU with the NTU regarding missing contract language in the final document from Article 8 to E.
Second.
Okay.
I see you made the motion.
I made the motion, and then we'll see, Ms. Brown? I didn't hear someone else's voice, too.
Ms. Oden.
Oh, Ms. Oden's.
Who gets the second? You get it?
Okay.
Okay.
All right. So, any questions or comments? Nope. Okay.
I can confirm that this was part of the original negotiation, and it was just a clerical error.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Okay. Yeah, we spent a lot of time talking about that. So, on the motion to approve the MOU regarding the missing contract language from Article 8 to E, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. The next item...
I just...
Oh, go ahead.
Do, do I need to abstain, given what was that, given what was done?
I think that you should use your personal judgment on it. I don't know that you personally would ever be affected by the planning time...
For the unified...
For the unified arts teachers, given that you weren't one. But I wouldn't mess with anything legal.
I don't want to jeopardize. I didn't say anything just for fear that it might jeopardize.
All right. So you did not vote?
I did not.
Okay. So Mr. Claffey is an abstain.
Okay, so seven, one abstention. Yep.
Ms. Oden would also like to abstain.
Okay. I'm scribbling out now. Okay, two abstentions. Okay, great.
Okay. And, okay. And as Ms. Oden has said to me in the past when I first got on, like, and even the appearance, might as well be safe. So, the next item of new business is a memorandum of understanding with the Nashville Police Department regarding safe school zones. I'll make the motion to approve that MOU.
I'll second.
And seconded by Ms. Johnson. And then I'll let Mr. Poska say anything if he wishes. It is in our packet.
We're talking about the MOU for the...
The safe school zones with the Nashville School Department.
We have added the additional, as, as we heard the public speaker earlier, we have added another Essar Road to the Middle School, thanks to, thanks to the chief. Those are all, you know, all in place. Significant difference from last year, you know, where we started the year off with the, Essar Road to the Middle School, then due to the staffing issues, it had to be removed. So, I'm really appreciative of the Nashville Police Department for recognizing the need for that and putting that back into place.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Poska. I echo that. Thank you very much to the Nashville PD and Mr. Guthro, who was here earlier this evening for advocating for the safety of our students. It was really encouraging to see a member of the community go out of their way to go from board to board to the chief of police. That was a lot of work that he did. And it really is making an impact on our kids. So, thank you for that. All right. Any other comments or questions regarding the safe school zones? Okay. All in favor of approving the memorandum of understanding, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And then the last item of new business I have is a request to travel. And so, I'm sorry, I have to keep flipping back, which I thought was really clever to have the two, but it's not working out because it is not going to the right page. I'll make the motion, and then I'll have Mr. Poska speak to it. So the motion is to approve, wait, where is it? The motion is to approve travel for Dr. Andre, Dr. Sarfati, and Mr. Poska to the League of Innovative Schools. Is it a conference?
Yes, it's the opening conference.
Opening conference, October 19th through 21st, 2022.
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you. Oh, I should say the cost in there. Do we have the actual cost yet, or you need the approval to get the tickets and such?
Approval, we need the approval first to move forward.
Okay. Okay. Any comments or questions? I have a question for Mr. Donovan. Do we need to put anything in there about money, like a limit or anything? You guys aren't going to be flying, like, ultra first class?
No, well, we will, no matter who the people are, we will make sure they follow the policies on travel.
All right.
Since I'm the only one here at the meeting, I just recommend that I don't get the middle seat, so that...
Well, you know, business class, you know, the one with the extra legroom, I could see that. But, you know, we want to be, oh, God. No, they cannot drive because we need them here. So, we're not going to give them leave for two weeks to get there.
Well, you never know. The flight could be canceled, and they could be driving back.
Oh, goodness. Oh, I hope not. In the, in the interim between now and then, could you ask Mr., Dr. Andre to just let the board know where we should be referring concerns or questions or anything from the public while the three of you are in California?
Certainly. Yep.
We don't have a gap. All right. So, all in favor of approving travel for our superintendent and assistant superintendents to the League of Innovative Schools, I forget what it was called. What did I say? Orientation?
Opening conference.
Opening.
Opening.
Yeah. October 19th through the 21st, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Well, congratulations to you guys for getting a little trip out of this, where you get to learn some new stuff. And I'm really excited that our district was selected to be a part of this. So I can't wait to hear what you learn. All right. So we moved the second public comments earlier. Oh, Ms. Brown?
I have some new business I'd like to bring up.
Okay.
And it's actually in regards to one of our comments we had this evening, and the transparency of the district in the accusation that we had a student who was vaccinated without a representative or without the school. Sorry, I'm not saying it very well. I'm stumbling a bit. So, I think that it's important that the district holds, figure out what happened, and make sure someone's held accountable, whether it was the Department of Health or whether it is the school district. I think we really make, need to make sure to build consumer confidence in our parent and teacher community that they're safe, and we're going to be keeping their information safe. And so, I would like to be very transparent moving forward from the district about what exactly happened. So, I would like to, and if you guys want me to make this a motion, I can, but I thought I would like to just make it a request for information beforehand. So, if we could do it that way, I'll tell you what I would like to have happen, and then you can let me know if this is, it's a board action. I would like a transparent communication of what happened, and I want it to be transparent to the community. I'd like a request, a report of the number of students who received vaccines annually through the school. I'd like to report on whether there have been any other unauthorized vaccinations in the last 10 years that we aren't, that we're aware of. I'd like a copy of the written procedure of how a student is escorted from the classroom into the clinic, and then the clinical procedure. And it's probably already written down somewhere. You can just, you know, I think it'd be great to let everybody know how their children are being escorted for this particular item. And then I'd also like an update on how student and teacher records are collected and maintained. Last spring, we passed a, the board passed an action that teachers, if they were willing to show their vaccination cards, they got a 10 days of time, extended time off. And I want to make sure that the teachers who are on that track also feel safe that their information is safely maintained. I actually had requested that when we were discussing it, and it was a little bit of a noncommittal answer. Unfortunately, I'm pointing at the HR department, but you were not here at that time. So, that's the list of items. Would the board, I will be happy to repeat them or make a list and send them out to everyone. Would the board be comfortable with me just, with just making that request, or do you want me to take a formal motion?
So for, I just want to make sure I understand. So for clarity, you want, how many are kids are receiving vaccines yearly? How many accidental vaccinations in the last 10 years? How the kids are escorted to the nurse's office or principal's office, or whatever the procedure is? And then how student and teacher records are maintained, specifically regarding our teachers who, we approved them getting, not having to use their sick days if they got COVID after being vaccinated, correct?
I would, I would like both. I'd like to know how student records are maintained, and also how teacher records are maintained. Do we have a policy or procedure in place beyond just general FERPA and HIPAA guidelines? Do we actually have a, are we keeping them in a database? Are we keeping them in a file folder? How could people know that their personal information is safe? And, you know, if there's an emergency situation, how will it be accessed if, if they're needed? And then also, I'd like to know what the clinical procedure that the Department of Health does once a child has been escorted into their care.
Okay. So I don't, I don't know how to get the Department of Health thing without contacting Ms. Bagley, the Director of Public Health. But I, I would imagine that the district should be able to provide the board with the rest of that information fairly easily upon request. The Department of Health, though, I'm not sure. Mr. Poska?
The Department of Health did provide kind of guidelines for our nurses to go through, and then as part of this whole process, they have been reviewed and updated in the last day or so because of this incident. So that information is available.
Okay, great. Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. I'd like to expand upon this a little bit, because I'm really concerned that the Health Department and our school district are working together. It should be the Health Department, these forms, these consent forms that the parents sign through the district. We shouldn't even have our hands on this. This should go right over to the Health Department, and then the Health Department makes appointments with the parents through their mobile clinic or through the parents coming in, because we're right in the middle of this. Because when I looked at everything last year, when we used to get our notices, and it used to say, the CD, I'm going to just use this as an example here. The CDC announced over the weekend that it's recommending COVID-19 vaccines for children as young as six months. Please contact your healthcare provider and seek vaccination. If more convenient, the City of Nashville Division of Public Health Services offers vaccine and boosters, no cost wise a week. We are a school district. Our job is teaching, learning. Somehow, we're getting into the healthcare business here, because we shouldn't be prescribing, diagnosing, and treating, and that's exactly what we're doing here. We are diagnosing a condition that hasn't even happened by giving a shot. We are prescribing that people should get the shot, because we were telling everybody last year, make sure you get your flu shot, and make sure you get your COVID shot, you gotta keep getting the COVID shot, from more than one source, not only the superintendent. And so we shouldn't even be doing this. The public health is providing consent forms, which school nurses have available in their offices. I think this should be now, if we're going to hand out these consent forms, here they are. Here's all the consent forms, part of the consent forms for our students to get vaccinated. We shouldn't even be involved in this, because once there's a third party in the middle, accidents happen. And we don't even know if this child could be allergic, because it says very clearly here, children who are allergic to eggs may not receive our flu vaccine and should see their provider. So an accident happened, for whatever reason, and we shouldn't even be in the middle. The kids shouldn't even be having the shots here. It should be, it should be done at DHHS, and let the parents fill out the form, send it over to them, and we eliminate this whole thing.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Ms. Lampier, then Ms. Darling?
I just have a question about how many schools in New Hampshire do vaccinations, such as the ones, the program we have here?
I am unaware of that number, to be quite honest with you. I try to find that out, but I don't, I'm not quite sure.
Ms. Darling?
So, I, I want to start with saying, I started my career in healthcare, and in nursing, and in giving medication. You're taught very quickly that wrong dose, wrong medication, and missed dose are the three... three most common errors. This error was wrong identity, which means every other one of the patient rights was also broken at the same time. It's one of the most severe. And I agree with so many of the points that are getting brought up. However, I do believe that the school is a perfect site where it is where families know how to get there. But one thing I would urge us to look into maybe for next year, I understand we can't change things on the drop of a hat, but while I lived up in Maine, they would do the same thing with the dental clinic and with flu vaccines, only you received a time slot and you were told that you had to physically be there but for a procedure to happen to your child, because at the end of the day, a piece of paper should not be allowed to consent and a child can't consent. And if you're doing an invasive procedure, I know for myself personally, I would rather be there. And I know thinking of my kids, especially my younger one, when they freak out over shots, that sticks with them. We don't need to be making more kids afraid of shots by not even having their parents support there. So I understand there's not really anything we can do now and I hate the fact that this mistake happened, but I recognize that unfortunately, med errors account for 10% of hospital deaths a year. So the fact that this was one error out of many shots that have been given statistically is nice, but that doesn't stop the fact that the victim of this was a seven-year-old.
Ms. Gilio?
I'd like to add another perspective, okay? First of all, based on my age, you probably know that I was in school during the 1950s during the polio outbreak. I was in first grade and I remember the day distinctly because we were all lined up outside in the hallway and these nurses came by and gave us all polio shots. Family members of mine had suffered from polio. It was, I'm sure that no one was asked if we could get them. I can't believe that that happened in Cambridge in the 1950s. And many of us are here now, healthy, with good breathing lungs because we got those vaccines. I'm not saying that that was right, that's just how things were done then. My point here is that if we were to require, I've worked in schools for over 20 years and I've been in the libraries where I've worked, a lot of times that's where they've actually given the flu vaccines. And I have, this is the first case of a mistake that I have been aware of in either where I worked in, in Massachusetts or here. Granted, if I were that family, I would be disturbed about it, absolutely. However, I think that if we try to take away the advantage of having public health come to the schools to give with parental permission vaccines for the flu, that we are going to see worse epidemics than we have had before. I feel very strongly that we need to look at the greater good. I'm sure we need to tighten up. I don't know how this happened. It shouldn't have happened. It should never happen again. But I think that if we left it up to the parents to make arrangements with public health to get their children to one of the public health vehicles or to their offices on Mulberry Street to get their vaccines, that the vaccine rate would be much lower than it has been for the last 20 or whatever years since they've been giving flu exams of vaccines. And also that we've been lucky, you know, we had, I guess it was not luck, but during COVID, there was very little flu also because people weren't just, we weren't together, we were wearing masks, we were being cautious, we were washing our hands. I would hate to see the flu epidemic increase because of one mistake and I, as a grandmother, feel that very strongly. So that's just my view on it.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Gilio. Has anybody not spoken who wants to speak on this? Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Brown and then Ms. Darling.
I just want to be clear, for the record, I am not trying to create any jerk reaction here in saying that we should immediately stop giving kids who need access to vaccines or any, actually, I'm a big proponent of dental care as well in, through the schools if that's what kids need. The key here is that we need to make sure that our procedure is crystal clear to all consumers that might need access to this and that all parents who don't want to use the service should also have the right to not use it. And I think that's, that's what I'm trying to get out here. This needs, we need to have this ironclad and it can't happen again. And even if it's one in five years or three in 10 years or whatever the number is of accidents, it's our job to find a way to turn, make that number zero.
Okay. Ms. Darling?
I honestly was just going to mention that the flu vaccine is one of the most easily accessible vaccines we have. In fact, I regularly tell people, no, I will not be getting my vaccine because I'm holding out for CVS when they pay me my $5. So I mean, it's, for me, I guess like for other situations, like with the COVID vaccine, having mobile clinics where people could come, like that made so much sense to me. The flu vaccine, not as much if only because it is so easily accessible through many, many, many different routes. But yeah.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Darling. Okay, go ahead, Ms. Gilio.
I just, I just wanted to add that, yeah, I'm losing my mind here, that I, we all know our children or grandchildren best and we would know as a parent if our child would need to go to our physician with us, to their pediatrician, or to go to CVS to get the $5, or whatever is best for our child. And so I don't think that anyone would decide to sign up their kindergarten child to have a vaccine in school if that was not something that their child could deal with well.
Now, that I totally agree with, wholeheartedly.
It's totally up to the parents.
A part of the argument that I feel like hasn't been brought up is the fact that for a lot of parents...
And it's not just kindergarten children.
Who are okay with it.
It's not just kindergarten children, it could be high school students, it could be any age kid who's going to do better going to their personal physician with a parent or a guardian versus getting in line at school and having the vaccine. I think that it's definitely a parent or family call.
Thank you.
I just feel like at the end of the investigations, we should all be able to like sit down, look at the reports, see exactly what went wrong where, and maybe start working on what we can tweak for next year to make things better, more secure, more transparent for families, whatever it takes.
Okay, thank you, everybody. I think that, I, I think that Ms. Brown's requests are reasonable and prudent under the current circumstances, so I'm going to ask for consensus from the board for that. Does anyone have any objection to asking for administration to provide us that information?
Would those numbers include how many we vaccinated?
That's one of the things she asked for. Mr. Claffey?
I just asked that the request be made directly to Dr. Andre, give him a chance to be here. He might be able to address some of those.
Yeah, he might have the answers right now, I just...
So can we just wait until he's, until he's here at our next meeting?
That's why I'm asking for consensus as opposed to a motion.
Yeah.
Can we put it on the next agenda, I guess, for when he's here?
Yeah, if he wants to bring the information next month, I'm fine with that. I think that's, that's acceptable or into our next meeting, yeah.
Okay, all right. And the other thing, I just, I want to make sure that we acknowledge the realities of our school district and that is that 40-plus percent of our kids are on free and reduced lunch, which means that they are in families that have some socioeconomic challenges. And those challenges could range from transportation to access to doctors to other things. So our partnerships with public health, our partnerships with the dental connection, some of these other partnerships allow families to access services that they might not otherwise be able to access, which improves outcomes for kids. So at the end of the day, I think everyone on the board is in support of kids having good outcomes in general. Not necessarily whether we approve or disapprove of vaccines, but we certainly want our kids to be healthy and have food and, you know, have access to things. So let's give Dr. Andre a chance and administration a chance to look into this with public health to give us a little bit more information about how the program works before we dive into trying to make changes without understanding. So, Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. I agree with what you said, but we just want to make sure there's no more mistakes because this mistake could have cost this child their life. You know, we're very fortunate and, you know, and it clearly states if you're allergic to eggs, if that child was allergic to eggs, we could have had a bigger situation here.
Yep, and parental consent is imperative. We can't, we cannot overstate the importance of parental consent, so...
That's why I was talking about trying to take the district and making other arrangements out of the middle, so then this way the parent is directly in contact with, with the Department of Health. So that's one last step that there could be a problem.
Yep.
Yeah. So we can also discuss that too and see what Bobby Bagley can do to help us so, so we can prevent something like this from happening again.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so, Mr. Poska, you have the list and then it'll be in the recording as well and I have it and Ms. Brown can send it an email directly to Dr. Andre and yourself if she's willing to do that, just to make sure we have clarity on that. Is there anything else that I'm missing?
I just have a question. It says here that the next board meeting is October 11th on a Tuesday. Is there a reason why we're not having it on October 17th, the Monday? I must be missing something.
Because that's my birthday and we didn't want to have a meeting that night because I'm turning 69 and, you know, we decided that's a big milestone.
I'm sorry, Mrs. Johnson. That makes perfect sense.
I don't...
I don't know why it's...
Tara sent us an email about it and she actually referenced you in it.
No, I can, that's, this is another meeting. I cannot make it on October 4th, but it's every other, it's every other Tuesday that I have a commitment. So I'm able to make that meeting, I'm just curious as to why we're not meeting three weeks from now on the 17th of October.
So there's, there's five Mondays in October, so we're meeting that Monday and then the next meeting after that. So it's this, this meeting mid-October, which happens to be the 11th, and then I don't remember why it's a Tuesday instead of a Monday. And then the next one was supposed to be...
Well, Monday's a holiday.
Monday's a holiday. Oh, we can't meet on a holiday.
But is that, that's just two weeks from now and not three, I thought we met at three weeks.
No, we don't. We meet twice a month.
Okay.
We meet at the beginning, the middle of the month, and at the end of the month.
Okay, then I'm fine with this.
And then, just as an announcement, the 31st is a Monday, that was supposed to be the second meeting of October. However, it's Halloween and in Nashua, it does trick-or-treating on Halloween night, so we decided to postpone that one one day so that people could go trick-or-treating with their families and not have to worry about board meeting stuff if they wanted to come.
And with that, with that consideration, I will not be here on November 1st because that is my other commitment with my other school district, sorry.
Okay, all right, so board member comments. Ms. Darling?
No comment.
Okay, Mr. Claffey?
Yeah, I do, thank you. I'm not sure why tonight's audience was made up of exclusively South students and parents. Was there, maybe there was one North parent?
There was a North kid.
There were about 15 speakers, all South students. And I think if we're going to reconsider a policy that would apply to both high schools, it's not going to happen if we hear from just one school, at least speaking for myself. So I don't know if you're out there, North parents, but whether you support the change or not, it'd be nice to hear from our other high school.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Claffey. Ms. Gilio?
I have no comments.
Okay, Ms. Johnson? Oh, sorry, I can keep going, Ms. Lampier?
I just want to say that I appreciated everyone that came tonight and I, I did vote against bringing up the, we did GPA discussion again because I felt that it had been decided. We've used, you know, a lot of research and a lot of work's gone into it and we can't just go back and forth on, on policies like that all the time, it just gets confusing and it, it's inefficient and it's not good for the district or for the students. So I am sorry for the people that came and asked me to reconsider it, that I decided not to. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lampier, Ms. Brown?
I've already said too much.
Okay, Ms. Oden?
I just want to say I do think it's interesting that the GPA issue came from South students. Haley Sweeney and Josh Gou were the ones that brought it forth and several students joined them after that, so I thought that was interesting. But I did notice the number of South students and the parents who spoke. But I appreciate where they're coming from because communication has been a problem here in Nashua for the last few years, so...
Yep, I agree. Ms. Johnson?
I think it's been for more than a few years, communications in the district, but let it be. I agree with Ms. Claffey, I just wanted to bring it back to give all parents on both schools a chance to weigh in on it. If nobody else comes in and it's the will of the board to keep it the way it is, then that's the way it's going to go. I didn't ask, I just said let the parents come in, let's open it up because I didn't feel it was fair that night, nobody was here. So there was lack of communication somewhere. With that said, thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you. And I just have, really quickly, I had mentioned to, I'm sorry, Mr. Rogers earlier about college nights. So North, I don't know South because I'm not on the South emails, but North is having College Planning Night on Wednesday, September 28th at 6:00 PM. They'll go over important timelines and deadlines and the counselors will be here to answer questions for juniors and seniors who are interested in college stuff. And then Wednesday, October 5th, which is the following Wednesday, is File a FAFSA Night, which for people who don't know is how you get financial aid to go to college. So a lot of our speakers tonight were talking about scholarships and other opportunities, but it's one of those things, like you don't know what you don't know. So I encourage all parents and students to learn all about filing a FAFSA and learning about how to access funding for college. And then, I don't know South, but hopefully Mr. Richard will send out an email about it. Tom, do you know?
I don't know the date off the top of my head, but I'll talk to him and make sure that he sends something out.
He did. Perfect. Yeah, I don't, I would read it, I just don't have it. So, so South families, check your email, South is doing the same thing because...
So Financial Aid Night at South is Tuesday, October 25th.
There you go. Thank you, Mr. Claffey. This is important, college is crazy expensive.
Thank you, Tina, for the tablet, yeah.
All right. I know, I'm actually really loving these. I don't have anything else. Does anyone else have anything else? We've gone over quite a bit this evening, but I think it was a worthwhile discussion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Johnson and Ms. Gilio.
I wasn't even trying hard to...
And thank you to our student reps for staying here so late. All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, we are adjourned at 9:10 PM.